You came back.
We're all still here.
Yeah, maybe we never stopped.
He did change. I'm just gonna point that out.
I did put on a different shirt.
Hey Ted, I've been meaning to ask you, over your right shoulder,
Yes.
there's something hanging from the ceiling. What is that? I've been fascinated by it and I don't know what it is.
Well, I'm, you probably, maybe you don't know, I'm very interested in historical advertising. And that is a trade sign for a jewelry store in the shape of a, in the shape of a pocket watch.
So how did you get interested? No, I didn't know that. How did you get?
I've been interested in it for 50 years. It's very, my, you know, my grandfather was, owned a hardware store and had, you know, various kinds of advertising stuff in the store, which I never knew because the store was modded by the time I was a baby, but he, at their farm, they had things and it was sort of sparked an interest. I think architecturally, they're very interesting. And there are many times the craftsmanship that went into trade signs was really extraordinary. This one has a very ornate, it has a, you know, it has a hoop on the top of it with a, a wind and.
Oh, it's the whole, the whole thing.
Yeah, and it's got a big filigree surround on it and it's double phased. So it hung rather than mounted.
So we have something in common.
What's that?
When I was in college, or for a long, long time, I thought that my life's path was gonna be writing advertising copy.
Oh, okay.
I used to, just for fun, I used to do jingles and things like that.
Yeah.
And I went up to New York once for a, sort of a seminar on for young people, I was, I think, still in college and on, you know, on careers in advertising and that sort of thing. And what I came away from it with was, you know, it was, which is obvious, but it was all about the, the almighty dollar and that, that wasn't my motivation, so I decided maybe that wasn't something I would do, but I still have fun thinking about how one would showcase in a catchy, quick way products. So, I mean, that, you know, the great advertisements we had, you know, plop, plop, fizz, fizz, I mean, how can, well, they're too young, but how can you forget that?
I can't forget that.
I don't know whether you can see it, but over the, the transit window that's over the windows of the far side of the building, there's, there's an advertise, there's a pen, a fountain pen. And it's over my right shoulder as well.
Oh, I see it.
And it is about, it's about five feet long.
You know, they had one of those over at Forties in Washington.
Yeah. I don't know where this one came from, but I bought it, I bought it in Pennsylvania, from a dealer.
What, what, does it advertise a particular?
There's no markings on it for, you know, whether it was Mont Blanc or where, it's black, it probably was a Parker pen. Parker made a lot of pens that were black and gold. And it, it probably was, but it's a fountain pen that, yeah, I just thought it was interesting, and so there it is.
Fun.
Reedy, Reedy used to be in advertising, that's how she got me to move to New York. I was supposed, I was supposed to be a kept man. You know. Then after we got married, she said, oh, you know, I think I'll go to graduate school and take a job that pays half, half the amount.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
You know. There's some really interesting stuff that's been created for advertising over the years.
Interesting. I'm just gonna turn the lights on. I need more light so I can read these tiny little figures.
Well, the bigger print one was in your mailbox at City Hall.
Oh, well, alright, my bad. I, I was in City Hall earlier this week, but I didn't get that.
Yeah. Yeah, the one thing that's missing from this, this pocket watch is, at the same, the jewelry store that many jewelry stores also sold glasses. And underneath this, there's obvious, there obviously was a, a pair, or there was a, there was a hinge that hung down and probably had a pair of spectacles. And I, it didn't come with it, so. I wish I had it, or had them.
You know what I always loved as a sign?
I think Rob might be in the audience.
Now he's up now.
I'm here.
Remember?
I was in the audience for a while, Andrew, but Emery promoted me a few minutes ago.
Ted, remember the old Whitey's Grill over by Fort Myers?
Yeah.
Right.
It had the great.
Columbia Pike.
Exactly. It had the greatest sign up center. It was, this was the succinct advertising I've ever seen. It was giant, it was neon, and all it said was eat.
Yeah. Yeah, on the south side of Columbia.
Yep. Roast chicken.
That's, you know.
I drank lots of bad beer in that bar.
Back in your drinking days?
Back in my drinking days, before I went to law school. I lived right, right near there.
Oh, Vito.
Your salad days, your drinking days, whatever.
South Wayne Street.
All right. So it is 1:03, Rob's here, although he's got himself turned off right now. So let's get started if we could. So it is Friday, February 12th at 1:03, and we are here for the second of a series of budget meetings. Today, we'll be talking with various city departments, I believe. And I want to thank Ellen Lorraine and Amberie for pulling together the information and giving us a second set of budget numbers. And also providing us the information regarding the vehicle mileage and vehicles that are in the fleet, as well as police department expenditures. So, thank you very much. I think these things are self-explanatory and we will get through them. And, and we're gonna take these pretty much in the order in which they, you have them listed on the agenda.
That, that was my thought.
Great, that's fine.
If Ellen Lorraine wants to talk at all briefly.
I was gonna get to that, but I just.
About the changes in last week versus this week.
So I can do that quickly because all that I changed was to include the January financial figures. And that, I created a column and it's the third column from the right on each of the pages.
How did we end up on GRRT?
I think that it went up, if we turn to page three. And it is account 10410, the end of January, we collected 377, 724. And today.
As opposed to 500,000 that we had projected.
Today, we've collected 476,300.
So you're very close at this point to what we had, what we had budgeted at 476.
Believe the amended budget of 500.
Yeah. So, well, that, that sort of plays out with what we were talking about last week. That, you know, a lot of people waited till the last minute to send it in. And, you know, our, our meeting was just five days into the, into the new month and probably mail hadn't been processed, so. You collected $100,000 in last week. That's, that's a great number. So, thank you.
Certainly, we can, we can provide where we are as of next week.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anything else that we need to note on this one, Ellen Lorraine, before we get started?
The transfer tax has been posted through December. But we haven't posted for January.
Okay. Do you have the number yet?
I do have the number, but that should be.
What page is that on?
Page one.
Transfer taxes on page 26.
Oh, well, there's also unpaid one, yeah.
So we're, we're at, as of December, almost 2 million, 1.9. 1,972,000.
So in January, 157,000 was received.
Okay, so we're well over 2 million now.
With three months to go in the budget.
With three months to go in the budget, yeah.
Well, with two months to go in the budget.
I'm sorry, two months to go.
Right, because April, March will roll into April.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's all very encouraging numbers, thank you. And obviously, I think most of us have gotten some updated information on numbers of houses that sold in the city in the last year, which is pretty staggering numbers. That was, that information was mailed out this week. So with that, I think we need to probably, you wanna bring Rick?
Well, yeah, I, I have brought Rick onto the panel.
There he is.
And I will share my.
He's still muted and he's.
Oh, I'm in.
Okay, great.
Are we essentially operating, going off of page six in this conversation?
Generally, the only, the only difference is that the, is it page?
Page 22 for the leafback.
22 is the municipal street aid budget.
Gotcha.
Where we budgeted the leafback. But, but yes, 90% of it is page six. So, so I'm gonna let Rick go through, we, we wanted Rick to present a little more detail because there, there are a number of requests, some are in the, the draft budget, some have not yet been added to the budget. So we wanted him to, to be able to provide you an overview of, of that.
Emery, if they're not, are they not in the budget at all, or are they separately under capital, or?
The, um, the equipment we did not put in, they would go in capital, but we have not, it's kind of like with the, the street program, we did not put a lot of the capital things in because we wanted to have a, a discussion before doing that.
Okay.
But they wouldn't go in the operating budget with the exception of if council were to, to, up to do the cleaning service. All right, Rick, you're up.
All right. What we did, we put a little presentation and Emery is going to be, going through slide by slide. And basically, it'll give you an idea of what we're looking at, what we have on hand. And we'll, I'll, I'll be able to talk about it a little bit. And the first one you see on there on your screen is the trash trucks that we have on hand from 2019 is our automated 218 Peterbilt, which is our six wheeler. It's our only 20 yard. And then the 2018, 2013, and of course, the 2005 International is what we call our third truck. What we have is four trucks that go out every Monday and Tuesday during the summer. They go out four times a week. One automated and one, the other three, like I said, are not. If you go to the next slide, Emery, please.
Rick, the 18 and 19 trucks are all leased, is that right?
Yes.
The 13 we own?
Yes.
Yes.
13 and the five we own. Okay, thank you.
Next slide, Emery.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, that was me. I'm, I'm looking at the wrong. Well, so what, the, the first thing we're requesting is a, a new trash truck to replace the 2005. So the 2005, like I said, is a third truck. We use that as a backup for, for recycled trash. And we're requesting the 2021 new wave. It's on a Peterbilt chassis and it holds up 25 yards. And what we're gonna do, once we, we're requesting that truck, we're going to move the 2018 Peterbilt, which is a six wheeler, smaller truck, that's going to be our backup truck. Because a lot of time during the summer, that cannot handle a whole route, so we have to either get the other truck or have another truck to help finish it. And getting this new truck, 2021, like I went with the, with the years, that would bring up our, our oldest truck as a 2013. And barring any, any major requirements of maintenance that takes our truck out of service for a long time, we're looking at not having to purchase another truck for three to five years. That will bring up our, our truck, our fleet with, with, which, to the standards in which we would like to have it. Next slide.
May I interrupt you, please, Rick?
Yes.
Uh, is your proposal for this Peterbilt truck, would this be a purchase or a lease?
Uh, we put it in as a purchase, but we have the information for a lease that it just finally got here. Sorry about that. He was just finally able to get it to us. It's in our possession. We're going to send it to, I do believe we already sent it to Ellen Lorraine and Emery, but there, there is a lease option for this truck, yes.
So it's a lease with a purch, with a option to purchase, is that correct, is the term? Okay.
And these are probably seven-year leases, right, Ellen Lorraine?
Yeah, we've gotten lease pricing for three years, five years. Five years in advance, five years in arrears, they're two separate plans, and then a seven-year lease, but we've typically done seven-year leases.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
And Ellen Lorraine, do, is that information buried in this budget document that we're working from today for the lead, the cost of the leases?
No, because we just got the information moments ago.
Okay.
And Ellen Lorraine, don't we treat leases as a capital expenditure?
Yes, we've been paying those out of the general capital projects fund.
Excuse me.
And that is page 24.
Okay.
Now, it shows that 2013 is a seven-year lease, not an ownership.
We paid it off in fiscal year '24.
So there's nothing for it in '21. We owned it outright, Rob.
There we go. Got it. Thank you.
Would that be the, is that an option too, to lease the, in the lease programs that you're being presented, Ellen Lorraine, a lease-to-buy kind of option?
That's what we've typically done, yes.
And how many, how many years after the purchase has been made, which is at the conclusion of a seven-year lease, is the vehicle still in use? Do we have historical information about that?
The 13 was the first time we leased a truck.
Okay, so the seven-year lease would have just ended last year, correct? Right. What's the mileage on that 13 truck?
Typically, they last about 15 years, would you agree?
I would agree. The mileage on the 13 is 35,861.
Thank you, Ellen Lorraine. And you expect a life term of 15 years. Thank you.
How does the city, like, obviously, there's not much value in this truck, but what value, is that, you use that as trade-in, or do you sell it in an aftermarket, some auction? How does that typically work?
Yeah, if, if you're, if we're talking about the 2005, correct?
Right.
Yeah, that, that's what I wanted to go over. Right now, it's unreliable. It's getting repaired as we speak. It's rusting, it's leaking. And we, we're, working on a truck, it requires a lot of maintenance and sometimes to fix something simple, you have to take out major parts to reach it. And, yeah, right now, the trade value, which when we were looking and getting bids for the new truck, we talked about a trade-in value and they looked at a truck and said, that's a, that's a parts truck. We really don't want it. We'll get rid of it for you if you'd like, but we really don't want it. So, yeah, the trade-in value. I, I mean, he said, being nice, I'll give you 3,000 for it, i- if that, 2,500, he's not even sure. Like I said, he doesn't even want it. He said, we'll give you the trash truck, you can keep that truck, do with it what you want. So it, it's, there is no value in that truck. It, it's already, like I said, uh, uh, you're looking at 16 years, uh, having that truck. It's put its time and service in, but it's, right now, it's just a truck putting too much repair work on it. And especially for us, to keep up the standards that we do, especially for trash and recycle, and especially during the summer, that third truck comes into play a lot, because it, it, there's always something with the truck that it, it either breaks down, stops, and a steady stopping service, we bring the truck back, we grab the third truck, we go finish the route. And then when we have time to look at the truck, if it's something we can fix, we fix, or we send it out. That's why it's a, it's basically a priority for us to have the, a working truck that we're able to do the recycle and, like I said, the backup for recycle, backup for trash, whatever truck that day happens to have an issue, I should say.
Rick, is there any value in having the 2005 as a second backup? Or is it more, more trouble than it's worth?
It's more trouble than it's worth. Like I said, we, we, we work with four trucks, uh, every day we go out for truck and it's always good to have a, a, that, we, like I said, we keep calling it a third truck, but basically, that's our, our fifth truck that we have sitting there. But it, this one would have no value, because we could take it out and sometimes it doesn't want to run right. It's leaking, it stutters, and when you're in the middle of, uh, trying to accomplish your route, it just holds us up, basically.
And how many miles are on that 2005?
If you could give us one second?
2005. It looks like it's 66,000, is that right?
Yeah, we don't have a mileage right now because it is in the shop.
Yeah, and I think the last one we had was almost over 6, the mayor's rate, over 66,000.
Looks like, yeah.
A lot of wear and tear on our trucks is not really, is mileage, as you gotta understand, the way we do routes is a lot of idling, it's a lot of moving up trash can to trash can, trash can to trash can. The most that gets ridden is when it goes out to the dump, but basically, it's, it's the rotation that we have around the city picking up trash daily, and that truck is not really meant to be, keep going. I mean, it is a trash truck, but to stop and go, stop and go, and that's really the wear and tear on that truck goes.
Yeah, I mean, as, as everybody will recall, we had an estimate, and this is analogous, it's not obviously a perfect comparison, but we had a, the, the chief provided us with a manufacturer's estimate of what the idling time translated into as actual mileage. My guess is that with this, the way Rick's describing it, with this kind of usage, that's kind of a decent rule of thumb. That the 66, it's gonna be 66 times a factor of one point something to give you the actual wear and tear.
Right. I, I, what I'll bring to your attention is, is that that 17-year-old or 16-year-old truck with 66,000 miles, it, there's only a delta of approximately 25,000 miles between that 05 and the 13. That has, you know, so it seems to me the 13 is aging prematurely. We have reason to believe that it's aging prematurely by the number of miles that are on it in a seven-year period.
Six.
13?
The 13 is described as, I wrote down, it has 35,861 miles. Right. And that's more than half of the miles on a, on a vehicle that is 16 years old. That is more, you know, so.
I think it's been used as a, I think the 05's been used as a backup truck for more than one year, so that's why the low mileage.
And it, it, also, that truck's a more modern truck and it's built to more, to handle it a lot better. You know, the, the trucks improve the, the, as you go on.
Right. So their 05 does not represent any kind of meaningful residual value that can be captured if it was to be sold or traded or what it disposed of.
Like I said, he'd take it off our hands and probably give us a couple thousand for it, he said, but that's tops.
Okay, thank you.
Rick, one last question from me is, uh, with the lease programs, with, does that involve a service for a certain period of time, or would you still be taking care of the trucks yourselves in-house on the maintenance side?
Yeah, they, they, like always, they offer us a warranty, but it's so, it's so, it's good for, hold on one second.
The one for newly, they're offering us a two-year warranty.
They're offering along with the prices a two-year warranty. After that, then the city starts paying for it.
The service, taking care of the service, okay.
Yeah.
And is that normal for that kind of a truck? Is, and that kind of service, it's a two-year warranty?
Like, like anything, even if you buy a new car, they're always willing to offer you a warranty, depending what type of warranty, how many years. And with, with the new trash truck, yes, he's offering us the, the, the two-year warranty to go along, like, to a certain point. I mean, there are certain stuff that it, it, he said, it depends of, of what's covered or not. You read the fine print to make sure, but for the service, it's a two-year warranty, yes.
Okay, now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask one more question. I apologize if I'm in the weeds on this, but I've never bought a truck like this, so I need to learn at your expense here. When you buy a truck like this, does it come with a three-year, 36,000 mile warranty like you would get with a, if you were making a car purchase? Or is this a completely different kind of warranty program? I mean, with a brand-new car purchase, you can, you get the warranty from the manufacturer and then you can buy an extended warranty? This two-year warranty that you just described, is that an extended warranty, or is that just for the first two years of ownership?
That's for the first two years of ownership for the service that's on the truck, because you gotta understand, it's a trash truck, they understand what a trash truck does, that it's not gonna accumulate mileage like a, a car would. So basically, the service that they want to provide you is, we're gonna come look at the truck, we'll show up, it's, if we can fix it in-house, here, meaning our house, they'll come fix it. If it's something that requires that they need their shop, they'll take it to their shop in the first two years, that we don't have to worry about transporting back and forth. But that's the kind of warranty that basically we're talking about. A service to it, come check on it and, and call them up, they'll, they'll show up, they'll send a representative, they'll look the truck over. Like I said, if it's something they can fix right here, they will.
And do they also sell an extended warranty?
They do not sell the extended warranty on the chassis itself.
Yeah, they don't extend the, that warranty on the chassis itself.
But if you, if you answer a spam call, then you can probably get an extended warranty to you.
As long as the city phone, not mine, right?
So no extended warranty?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Rick, let's move on, okay?
Yeah, so, next slide, Emery. Is she still there? Oh, there you go. Now, what we move on to staff needed is, like she said, it would be on page six as part of our full-time employees. And what we're asking for a full-time employee, you look at what we currently have, which is three, which, which is the, the manager, which is me, Kenny is a foreman for the maintenance side, and Allison's foreman for our facility sides. We have ma, eight maintenance workers, and what I'm requesting for is one more maintenance worker, which is, help us fill out our truck vacancies. You understand, you have a driver, we have the automated truck, which is one driver. On the other trash trucks, it's one driver with two guys on back. When you run with one guy, which we've done at times, you're looking at wear and tear on the guy and the guy's going back and forth, side to side. Ideally, and that's why I, I put that in, and I know it's hard, it's ideally two additional maintenance would be ideal, I should say. But what we're asking for is one more idea to help us out. Because what we try to do, like I said, is our main goal is, and, and what our main project, I should say, with the main department is trash, and especially during the summer. We do it four times a week. We, we, we run four trash trucks. And to maintain that, and along with everything that we have, it, it, it'd be good to have that man, because right now, we're filling in, which we have no problem. I've been on trash truck, Allison's throwing trash, and so has Kenny. But also, that's taken away from our answering emails, our having our meetings, our having our uh, uh, setting up projects and buying the equipment that we need, or buying materials that we need and setting that up. So requesting an additional person is what, what we'd have. If you go to next slide, Emery.
And that would be a, not a seasonal employee, but a full-time employee.
Full-time employee. And if you look at the next slide, it tells you how we throw right now. It's fully staffed trucks, we'd have one driver and two throwers. And that, we have four drivers. And right there shows us the, the, the people that are on that truck right now. And like I said, between the three of us, we fill in for the truck. But to fill in for the truck, to properly fill the three trucks. But to fill in for the truck, to properly fill the three trucks and the automated truck is ten people. We have eleven. So to, to, to give you an idea of, of how, of how that is. So, uh, next slide, uh, we can.
Yeah, Emery or Ellen Lorraine, either one, i- is the cost of the, what, an additional, uh, employee or two, is that, is that in the budget we've got, or is that something we'd add, we would add in, and if it's and either way, what, what's, what's the approximate cost we're looking at?
The addition of one is in there, and Ellen Lorraine, my, what was the?
Fifty-eight thousand that we have put in there, um, obviously, health insurance is an unknown, but I did go high with that, I did, uh, family coverage, so we we did.
So the. One line is that, please, Ellen Lorraine?
Under one hundred, five hundred fifty, one hundred, isn't it?
Yes, it would hit there, it would hit your time, your payroll taxes, health insurance, life insurance, pension.
Okay, but that, but all that put together is, um, is about fifty-eight K, we think.
Sixty.
Sorry? Oh, six-eight, sixty-eight, okay, so fully loaded, one worker would be about sixty-eight with, assuming the outer, you know, the full coverage and all that, so two would be about a hundred and thirty-six.
That's assuming that there's dependence involved in the healthcare.
Understood, that's what I said, at, at the outer end of things. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, uh, I understand asking for a full-time employee, you ask, well, what exactly can that full-time employee do? Like I said, our standard for the truck, we throw trash, recycle, and during the winter, I know it's not as hard as the summertime, but the, they still do a lot, they still, we, we do street sweeping, we do signs, we, we rake the beach, we clean the parking lots, we do the bathrooms, we do all bathrooms in town, plus the, the beach one and two. And it, it's, there's projects that can be done, and we have facilities, which is part of, uh, of, of maintenance, and we need to try to get that off the ground, of, of doing contracts, of doing evaluations of buildings, and, and and having that person available, because right now, Monday, during the winter, Monday and Tuesday, we throw trash, and from Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we commit two people, well, we try to, 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 to help out on the facility side, to try to do repairs, they've been going to police department fixing uh, uh, repairs there, and not just lights, repairs on the wall, floor, to our standards, if we can. If, if, if something that they need to look at, and, and it's something beyond our or, we, we, we know we have to get somebody and bring somebody in, and that's what we want to do. And also, I know COVID i- is something that just happened this past year, but it was even harder for us with COVID, because the minute somebody is sick, or somebody even has a cold, they go to doctors, you're required to quarantine, because they send you to go get a shot. So now, not only we're missing, at that time, missing people for fourteen days. And it's, it's, we're still in the COVID times, I understand, and like I said, that's not typical every year, but we really do need to keep, continue to, to do the service that we do, and provide the trash and cleaning, and doing whatever comes from City Hall, or whatever, send our way. I- is why we're asking for a different, uh, 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 an additional full-time employee to work for maintenance.
And Rick, help us out with the, um, what effect it would have to outsource the bathroom cleaning?
I'm glad you asked that, uh, we will get to that if you can wait, it's in one of the further slides.
Okay, by the way, Ellen Lorraine, did, I can't find these slides, were they emailed out?
I don't think so, Emery, did you email them?
I don't think they were mailed out.
No, they were.
They were not emailed, they'll be attached to the minutes.
I'd like, can you email the slides that we're looking at now?
Yep.
Thank you. Rick, one question, you know, when we talked about the trash truck, uh, we have one automated truck, did you consider another automated truck?
Well, the problem with that, Mary, you, you have to understand, when we first got the automated truck, it was, uh, sitting down and going over our trash routes, where can, where, where is it best used?
Right.
How can we get the best effect out of it, and there's certain streets that it just won't work on.
I got it, I, I'm with you, I just didn't know if you'd considered it.
Yeah, to get another one, I don't think we have the area, as of this moment, I mean, it's still growing here in Lewis, and a lot more buildings are going up, and right now, it's, it's, we're using the automated truck where it best fits, and we're, we're, we're taking advantage of that truck, but to get another one right now, I don't think we're quite ready, because a lot of trash is, is on both sides of the streets, and that truck cannot handle it.
It works very well on Pilot Town Road.
Yes, it does.
Where it's going Harborview, too.
Yeah, in Pilot Town Village, where it's wide, it's open, and he's allowed to go down one side, come around, so it works.
Rick, can I ask one question around the, um, maybe others can help with this, uh, the last time you had added staff uh, to this, you know, adding, say, two, two users, was it?
We just added staff, uh, this past year and one recently, but that was to replace people that, well, two last year, two retired.
That's what I mean, I'm not saying like-for-like, I mean, scaling, scaling up.
In- increasing the number, we that, that would be when we took on recycling.
Right.
Okay.
We, we added, we added two staff people when we, um, took on the recycling, um, it had previously been contracted out, and we were having problems with the quality of the service, so we brought it in-house, and added two people to, to take care of that. At that point, we were doing every other week recycling, and now, now we're doing it weekly.
That was my question, so presumably, both the frequency and also the footprint of the city are larger than when the la- like a previous time he's, that the department was able to scale up?
I wouldn't say the footprint is markedly different, but, um, there continue to be, um, maintenance responsibilities added. We've, um, taken on more linear feet of the, the trail system. We, you know, at this point, we're talking about, um, you know, potentially adding another restroom over at the, the Rollin Center. You know, we, we have added a, a more, um, focused view on facilities and creating the facilities foreman position, so there's more time being spent on, on being proactive on our facilities maintenance, rather than um, chasing things when they break down and contracting it all out, so so I would say we have increased the workload, um, in a number of areas.
Yeah, thank you.
And Emery, how long ago was that recycling, uh, brought in-house?
I feel like it was twenty eighteen.
Is that long ago?
And can I just say, after that recitation, um, that it, it, it bears pausing for a moment, I think, to say that, uh, to congratulate Rick and his fellow managers, um, because uh, the trash collection is, is one of the core responsibilities that, and services that we deliver, and they do a fabulous job. And I also want to say, good for them, uh, from time to time, I, I've been guilty, and I think others probably have been too, not on this call necessarily, but I see sometimes on top of the recycling bins, you know, a bag of something that shouldn't have been in the recycling bin, and please keep doing that, that's, that's great, and I think you know, people go, oh darn, but it's, it's almost always innocent, and, and they don't do it again, and that's terrific. So thanks for that.
Thank you. And we got, we're working on that, too, I do believe, we just, we have a program that they send us whatnot to put in recycle stickers to put on the, the recycle carts, and we're trying to, uh, we're working on that, with the bad weather this week, we, we couldn't.
Yeah, that will make a big difference, I think.
Yeah. And also, if, if I can put on there, I forgot, I, I mean, the total trash, and I'm proud of these guys, too, because they, they, they did a lot, they worked hard. They threw one, uh, one thousand six hundred and eighty-nine tons of trash last year, and five hundred and sixty-four tons of recycle, so that's like twenty-three, give or take, twenty-three hundred tons that they threw last year, to give you an idea of, of of the type of trash, or how much we throw a year. That was the numbers, that ended in December, I should say.
All right. Is there more, Rick?
Yeah, so, the next item, uh, uh, as you see on there, is our leaf back. Right now, for our leaf back, if, uh, if I'm correct, we have a two, uh, I take it back, yeah, it's a two thousand two OBD model, and that, as you know, by the years, two thousand two, it's, uh, it's got many years on it. We use it for leaf collection, leaf collection is Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and it usually starts September to December, give or take, because it depends how quick it falls, how long it falls. And what we've seen is, it's, it's picked up more, it's picked up a lot more, a lot more houses, and a lot more stops that we, we've replaced. And as you see on there, I put on there that we've, we've already replaced the vacuum hose, which is the suction hose that is on the side of it. We replaced that twice, it keeps be- getting beat up every time we use it. The propeller, and what I'm talking about, when I say propellers, no, little something small, is, it costs a couple thousand, and it's a big propeller inside that helps break all this up as it comes in there, along with the kit that it comes along with it, you just can't do the propeller. And we've done that already, it's losing suction this past year, uh, last year when we ended up, not this past year, the year before, when we ended up finishing with it, we send it out for repairs. Even that guy who works on it had trouble fixing it, he said it's old. It's, and just like when, it's always, it's harder to find parts when something's that old, too. And, uh, on average, like I said, we, we have to empty it like three times a week every time we go, Emery, can you go on to the next one, please?
How much for the repairs when it was repaired two years ago? How much it costs?
If I'm correct, Ellen Lorraine, wasn't it at one time over three thousand, close to, the first time we did it? And we did it in-house, and it took like two weeks for us to do it in-house. Am I correct? Yeah, so it was over, uh, over three thousand, close to four thousand, and then you're talking about the manpower and the man labor hours that we put in here, to, we needed two weeks consistently, eight hours a day to take everything apart, put everything back in. Or, it would, it would have went up even higher if we would have sent it out.
I apologize, Rick, I thought I had understood you to say that you had sent it out to a, uh, repair shop.
After time, yes, we send it out, but the first time, we repaired it, the second time, I say, like I said, yeah, we send it out for the motor, it's, 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 it's old, it has, it's, it's served its time.
Thank you.
And as you can see, what we're, we're getting at here, what we're requesting, it's a new model, it's a Bonnell Spartan Pro, uh, plus leaf trailer, it holds twenty yards, and that's something I want to point out, we go from fifteen to twenty yards. And like it says, hopefully, it, it would result in fewer trips. We can, uh, finish a lot more, and we do have to take it to Georgetown, because in Stokely, Stokely's right there on Route nine, we'll not take it because it's a big vehicle, it dumps too much, it costs them too much to keep picking it up and, and dumping it, which we've asked. So we have to ride out every time it fills up all the way to Georgetown.
Can you explain to me whenever it fills up with twenty yards, you've got to tow it to Georgetown to empty it?
No, the, the old one that we have now, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the old one in, in which we have, the OBD, the two thousand two, it's a, a, attached to the back of our truck. And once that fills up, and we suck up all the leaves, and it jams in there, and dust starts coming out the top, we need to travel, stop what we're doing, mid-pile, drive it all the way out there, unload, and sometimes, if it's filled too much, it jams, and it takes time and effort to get it unloaded. But yes, that's, and then we have to wait to come back to hopefully start again.
And I'm not clear on how the, the new one, will that also be a tow behind?
It's a tow behind, but there, there is, uh, uh, better features on it that's going to help us out, and I wrote that here for safety benefits. And if you go to the next slide, it's, I'll give you, it shows you exactly what we're trying to get.
Okay, that's a nice picture, but, uh, why do, why do we need to go to Georgetown to dump it? We have some land here.
Well, that is the question, we were trying to put a pad, and that has been talked about before, the pad right here in our building, but, uh, the communication, along with, uh, the people who own it, is, is still in discussions. I don't know if that's the proper way of saying it, and to actually be able to you're look, you're looking at fifteen yards, and to be able to dump that and go pick up more leaves, it needs a big pad, and we, we don't have that right now, put it that way.
Okay, uh, how big a pad would it need?
So, we, we have worked with GMB to design a concrete pad that we would use for, um, for leaves, for street sweeping, that would allow us to go less frequently to, um, dump them. The plan was to put it at the area next to the shop. That is area that is jointly held by the city and the BPW, and it is associated with the, the BPW. They had agreed that we could that, that we could use it, however, they wanted to develop an agreement, and it's kind of all wrapped into the other issues going on with BPW right now.
Help me understand, why do we need a concrete pad in order to dump leaves?
Because otherwise, we can't, it, it's, we can't pick them up to, to get them back into a truck to take them out to dump, to dump them.
I'm sorry, otherwise you can't pick them up to do what?
We have to take them to a yard waste dump.
Why can't we just let them rot? Uh, in, in a field?
Well, we don't have anywhere to do that, and, and that also requires a permit from Delva, or from Denrick, you can't just you, you can't just dump.
Well, we have a whole bunch of acres in the sixty-six acre park that aren't being used yet. That's all zoned open space, I don't think you can dump in there. Have we looked into that?
Well, I, I mean, I can check, um, but I think that.
It does seem to me odd that we're arriving to Georgetown every time we collect a a load full of leaves.
Um, I will say, I remember this from, um, something with the farmer's market. There is a state, at, at least there was then, this is several years ago now, but there is a state statute that governs, um, things that are defined as composting activities.
Right.
Because of groundwater contamination issues, so I mean, I, I don't know the volume we're talking about, but it, if, if we, if we dump it, even if we had a place to dump it out there, we, we'd have to make sure we didn't run, because there's, there were a lot of the, the way all this came up was that the, the farmer's market was trying to figure out a way to have a, a community compost area as a public service.
Right.
And it, it rapidly got, uh, very complicated, because composting operations are not, um, necessarily environmentally friendly.
Well, I know that Parks and Rec was, was dumping shredded compost in the, in that area.
That was, that was.
That's wood chips, that's different.
Say again, please?
That's just wood chips, that's not compost.
Well.
The, the wood chips, and, and, and they're, the, the wood chips are, are stored there, and then they're used, it's not a, a dump.
They stopped that, though, they're not allowed to do, we were not allowed to do that anymore, it's no longer put there.
Right.
Aren't these also leaves that are typically being, like, sucked up from the street?
Yeah.
Yes.
So then you're bringing in oil contaminants that you're then gonna dump into the marsh?
Yeah, I mean.
That was part of the problem with putting a compost thing out at the Great Marsh Park.
Right, and, and I'm pretty sure like ninety-plus percent sure that we would need some sort of a, a solid waste permit from Denrick to be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Look into that.
Look into it, but I think that we'll, we'll find that administrative end of it may be very complicated.
But I'd like to take, I, I'd like to redirect the question or readdress it that Rob first asked, and that is do we have an idea how large a pad that GMB was, did GMB ever pro- progress to a design stage where they showed the size of the concrete pad that would be required for this?
Yes, we have, we have a design, we just don't have, um, an agreement with BPW to build it on that property.
I understand, I understand. But it's like a ten by twelve, or twenty by twenty?
Like a fifty by fifty, or fifty by sixty.
I see, okay, thank you.
Even though you're gonna have some concern about, if we leave it very long, you have some concern about runoff of contaminated ways.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And, uh, uh, the reason I put this picture in there, so you get a better idea, the leaf back, which you've been running, does not have that buddy seat on there. What happens is, the person gets out of the truck, the person has to turn it on, you have the suction that goes up into, to suck up the leaves, and he's required with two buttons. And he's required with two buttons to go up and down. And it's very sensitive buttons that you push it the wrong way, it slams down with the suction that has on there. He has to swing it back and forth. And I know throughout a lot of these streets here that we have to go through, you cannot go in a straight line. There's a lot of trees, a lot of stuff that we have, the driver has to curve out, so when he does, he lose he lose picture, he lose track of the 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 guy who's in the back. And they lose that communication that they can't give hand signals, because right now the truck is turned, but he the guy on the back is walking straight. This one offers a booster seat, not me, a buddy seat, as you can say. And as you can see, he's strapped in there. He'd be able to work it with his hand, he's not working the hose back and forth. And and I have a video, it's four minutes long, but what I want to do is show you like thirty seconds of it running and it's going to be the next one. But it 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 works better, it's more efficient. It's not something that the 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 guy is 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 going to get wear and tear on him. And after they're done, he jumps up back up front and then they they go to the next stop and he gets back on it, so the next one.
And Ricky, uh Rick, excuse me, does it is that guy on the back on the jump seat? Is does he have radio communication with the driver?
That's gonna be the better communication, so when you lose track of the driver, he's still talking to the guy up front, hey, listen, slow down. Move faster, move in, move out.
Got it.
Stop.
Thank you.
That back up and basically it's no working, Emery.
No, I don't know why.
Okay.
Hit the black and it should start. If it doesn't, then.
It isn't happening.
Well, basically, if you get the idea of the guy on the picture, he has a remote in his hand and he's working it back and forth. It's not, it's 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 a lot easier, a lot more effective. We can move a lot faster and accomplish a lot more because there is there is a lot more stop, I'll use debris circle an example. We go to debris circle and by the time we make it the whole way around, people are already putting more leaves out and piled up.
Bonnie.
That 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 tells you how much we pick up.
I bag them.
Bonnie, not Bonnie.
I bag them.
That, do you have the chief spells phone number? You just call him, he'll take care of that. Hey, uh what is the cost of this uh this uh leaf fact?
The leaf back is on page twenty-two, if you look at it of your your thing, it's uh five four eight five, I do believe.
Hold on a second, please. Five four eight five. Okay. A three-quarter ton trucks for a street department? No, that's not it.
Street, the last one.
Oh, I see, there are a bunch of them. That's a hundred and two thou, wow.
But you you gotta remember now, look at our old one that we have now is a two thousand two. We've gotten nineteen years out of it.
So that, what was that one originally? How much did that cost roughly?
That one, I I couldn't tell you, it was seventeen years ago, I'm not sure what exactly was paid for that. But it it, like I said, it's it's a thousand two, but it's more uh efficient, more safety conscious, and it's going to last us a while.
It's also larger.
Yes, larger, like I said, that's also, yes, it's five yards uh more more bigger than the other one.
And Ricky, is this a piece of equipment, a purchase or a lease?
This one's a purchase, I do believe that we.
Right.
Yeah, if it's there as a hundred and two thousand in one year, it's got to be a purchase.
It has to be a purchase.
So i- if you all want to see the video, Janine told me she can open it, I don't know what's wrong with me, but I can't.
Rick, is it in terms of the footprint, in terms of when you store it at night? Does it roughly take up the foot same footprint as the existing truck? I mean, you don't need to, okay.
Ellen Lorraine, what is the thinking of behind, I'm sorry, did I interrupt your answer? I didn't realize.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm I was done, Rob.
Okay. Eleanor, what is your thinking behind leasing a trash truck and not leasing a leafback?
Well, I think we hadn't considered the lease option for the leafback since it is an allowable expenditure under municipal street aid. Probably we had leased trash trucks, which is why we obtained lease information on the one that they're interested in.
Thank you.
And and didn't we, in your old intro last week, didn't didn't we establish that assuming the governor's budget goes forward, it's going to be the same MSA level? So I thought, thank you.
And uh Rick, does this uh uh leafback when it's not in use and most of the time, most of the year, it's not in use, it's just sitting parked. Is this uh it it can it be left outside in the in the elements or does it have to be stored inside a garage?
Yeah, it 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 can be left outside, but we tried to put especially newer vehicles like that or equipment that we get to put them inside the best we can, it cleared up over here to the side.
Okay, you have enough room to store them all?
Not really, like I said, uh the lean to be nice is something that we talked about last year, not putting it in the budget, we didn't, but I'm I'm just saying it's it's we we're expanding, Lewis is expanding, the areas in which we need to take are expanding. That's why our equipment is is getting bigger and better, because we're trying to keep up and maintain the same standards that we've been given the city of Lewis for for many years.
Okay.
Can I ask just, that that's a really important point, and I just wanted to ask one question, I mean, we've talked about this before, but with COVID, um and I think we all anticipate that some of the COVID dislocation will continue even when COVID is no longer the health threat it is now. With COVID, did you see an increase in um in your trash and recycling and everything else responsibilities because more people were here?
More people, more trash, yes, we had more trash last year than we we generated the year before because a lot more people were home, a lot more filling it up and we had a lot more problems with recycle, people they were just it was too much, but yes, we saw an increase, yes.
I think what's happening, people are ordering online, they're getting box, you know, more boxes. And that's just the way, that's the way it's probably going to go going forward too.
Carryout food, people.
Yeah. Hey.
Patronize the restaurants and they're doing carryout food instead of going out to them.
Rick, speaking to that very subject matter, I believe you said that last year you all haul twenty-three hundred tons of trash.
Or trash recycle total, yes.
Okay, and recycle, okay. Do you know what your total was for the previous year, which would have been on?
I think we topped it for more than two thousand. I mean, two thou, I take it back, two hundred tons.
Yeah.
So the previous year you were in, you came in at right around twenty-one hundred, is that correct?
For, well, for, let's take trash, it was a sixteen eight nine point nine three this year. I I don't know if Em, uh Ellen Rain can back me up on this, I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head, I think it was one like fourteen hundred. A little more, a little less. I don't I don't know the exact figure right now off the top of my.
Okay. Maybe, but Ellen Lorraine would have that later, we could get it from her, okay. Thank you.
All right, if you move to the next slide, Emery. Next one, please. All right, now that comes up to facilities, uh utility truck. What we're requesting is a utility pickup truck, I guess, we have two estimates. One of them is from Winter Ford and one of them is from Hertrick Fleet Service in Milford. The deal with this on Winter Ford, it is on state contract. It's a two thousand twenty-one Ford, but it's a three fifty on a three fifty chassis. That's a fifty-eight thousand. And that comes with a plow. The one we found for Hertricks, and let me explain this a little bit. The one we got for Hertricks, it's not on state contract yet. It should be, but it I'm not, I don't want to cope, but they don't want either. Their two thousand twenty-one is already capped off. So they're going to start building two thousand twenty-two in July, and that's when they expect it to go on to state contract. The reason is, these people are are starting to order so many trucks now, people are starting to get back into it and not to different municipalities, different towns. And they're behind on building trucks because we can give them the purchase order today, they're not going to start building to July and it's going to take twelve to thirteen months to get the finished truck. So that's 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 all the truck, even Winter Ford is probably twelve months out. We could get it early depending on if it picks up. The problem is them getting parts, parts to put things together. And when they start getting parts and being able to bring stuff into their to warehouse, they can start building and 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 putting them out a lot quicker. But for now, everybody, they're they're talking, they're twelve months out. So the one that we that that is cheaper, it's it's on a two, it's a two F two fifty on a two fifty chassis. But they'll start building that in July. We won't get that till two thousand twenty-three and most likely it'll be in fiscal year, well, it'll be paid with the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. But there's no, if if it comes early, the the, like I said, the the it's the unknown right now. That's why we got the two quotes, the the better one on the two fifty, two fifty chassis. That one is won't be on state contract until they start building the two thousand twenty-twos in July.
And Rick, what does it mean to be on state contract?
Pricing.
When it's on state contract, uh Emery can back me up on this, it should be it it's yeah, they they went out to bid to get the the lowest price support and that's why we always try to stay on state contract.
Because they got a volume pricing that's lower than we could get by ourselves?
Well, they've had, but there's also the charter requires that for purchases over twenty-five percent that they go through a competitive bid.
Yeah.
Purchase off state contract, that's already been through a competitive bid process.
Got it.
Versus us having to run our own. We're also part of a group called Sourcewell. But that's a national purchasing company and or I guess cooperative, um but so they don't deal with the local dealers, so so for vehicles, it's typically the state contract.
Now remind me, Emery, can the council waive the uh the competitive bid requirement for a purchased good?
No, not.
Yeah.
Will you service?
The right, professional services are not subject to that.
Okay. Thank you, I've got another question too. What do you use this truck for and how important is the difference between the the two fifty and the three fifty?
If you, if you go to the next slide, Emery. Here's the what we're looking at, the reason we want a utility truck. And we're going to use it mainly for facilities. And the purpose of utility truck, if you know, it has containers on the on the side, it's already built, that's the way they built it, is basically you're taking your shop out with you. Right now, when we send out people to to work with facilities and do a job. You need to go look out there, look at the job and see what you need, then come back and get it. When you get a utility truck, it's packed, it's got your equipment in it, it's got specialized tools that you can keep locked in it. No matter where you go, everything's with you. And as you can read on there, what we want to do, which it doesn't come with it, but eventually we want to add an air compressor to it and to and and a generator to it. It's already comes with a power inverter, which will be able to handle to charge batteries for all our drills. We'll be able to plug in the air compressor generator when needed. And that's what you're looking at, you're looking at a floating uh 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 drive, I should not floating, a driving.
Do you have a photo of one, Rick, use it all for us? Do you have a photo of one?
Most will have a travel with them.
Yeah, Emery and uh Ellen Lorraine, could you help me with a a question I had that, you know, Rick suggested that this may be because of the delay in the pipe, you know, the supply chain getting it to twenty twenty to, you know, twenty-three might fall in the next year. So what's the policy and or practice of saying, okay, well, we think Rick might need two trucks, but if it if we're allocating that this year, but then it falls into, or do we even have the authority to allocate budget for the following year? If that's.
No, we would place it on the proposed budget for FY twenty-three. And it would go through the same discussion, but we could say that it is on order. And we expect it in fiscal year twenty-three.
So so we would still budget for it for this coming fiscal year so that the money is there.
In case it comes early.
So in effect, we are committing today or, you know, during this exercise to a expenditure that would be realized possibly eighteen months out from now.
Potentially, yes.
All right. Thank you.
And I do believe the question was asked the difference between both trucks. The 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 difference between, well, like I said, the one is one a a three fifty and it's on the three fifty chassis, so it's more expensive. You have the other one, which is the Hertrick, is fifty-two thousand extended cab. That's a two fifty on a two fifty chassis. And a also the stuff that comes with it, it's already lined in the back, which is is a helps you with your equipment and everything slotting in the back. It's a a better, a better truck, better equipped, but basically it's an either or, they're both. I mean, the picture we didn't put on there and I should have, I probably, but we could get your picture if you'd like to see.
That's okay.
Uh uh if if you've seen the Board of Public Works, they have one, which is a different color. But that's the way they travel, they put a utility truck, they go out and they got all their tools and equipment in there when they go out to do when dig a hole or whatever they have to do.
Are they similar sized, like a telephone repair truck, a little smaller than?
Yes, got all them, all them drawers on the side and then you you got equipment in the inside that you go to either side, everything's locked. And you can travel wherever you go, open up your doors, you got different types of tools, like I said, different screws, different drills, that's kept with the truck.
And you don't have that kind of truck now, is that correct, Rick?
No, right now, like I said, when when I tell Allison and she she wants to do work or go, she sends her guys out to go do some for facilities. They have to go look at what they need, they need to come back to the shop, they need to get what they want, they take it over there, it didn't work, they got to come back to the shop. At least now she can send them in a utility truck. And that's what we're putting in there, the tools for for facilities. That when they go out, their truck is filled, they go to a job, they need something, they go right out to their truck, they get it, more finish it, better quick quickness, the guys are back and able to move on to another job.
Yeah, this is, to me, this is just like what we've been talking about, the the technology issues are going across departments, I mean. We've talked about how the the police cruisers are basically mobile offices, yesterday we talked about the challenges that code enforcement has because they they don't have access to uh to government, to the to the city lists in their cars and so they have to come back and how one improvement there would be to have mobile capabilities, so this, what Rick is talking about, I think is consistent with what we're hearing from multiple uh department managers about how technology and, you know, and and or technology and here actually hard stuff, you know, screws, truck drills, et cetera. Having it with you is enhances efficiency. One quick question for you, Rick, if I understand this list correctly, it looks like all the pickup, the three pickup trucks that we have now. If I leaving out the Chevrolet, I don't know what that is, but we have it looks like we have three Ford two fifties already. And the two options you had was one was a one two fifty and one three fifty, so are the two fifties?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't. Yeah, I what I forgot to say, we were going to replace, it's a the two thousand eleven, which Allison rides and now basic facilities use is a two thousand eleven, the Chevy twenty-five hundred, that one would go to the fleet and we're taking out the two fifty that that is a, I do believe, uh for two thousand seven, two fifty.
Okay, right, but I guess my question was, since of the two options, you've got the 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 winner winner choice is the three fifty and the Hertrick choice is a two fifty. Uh is there any big, other than the six thousand dollar or so difference, I mean, have you had any trouble with the two fifties since that's what's?
Well, the Winter Ford won't put a a the 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 two fifty on a two fifty chassis. And a as you notice the price that that there's there's a difference, you're talking about a seven, seven thousand am I right, seven, six thousand? Because and you're a Ford won't do that, they said they they won't, they won't put none on the two fifty chassis. So we called Hertricks, Hertricks did, like I said, it it it's it's a but it's a truck what you're looking for, but it's a two fifty, so it's 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 a, it's cheap, it's it's better better equipped but more mu- less money.
Okay.
A better truck, actually.
So the only trade off?
I'm sorry, Winter Ford comes out of Jersey and they have to follow Jersey's standards. That's why they won't put it on a two fifty.
So the drawback to the Hertrick is that it might be longer before it's delivered.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Like I said, that they won't start building it till, you can give them a a a purchase order number, they won't start ordering. They won't start ordering it. I mean, they will, they won't start working on it and building it till July. And it's twelve to thirteen months out of that. According to them, like I said, times change every month is is different. If they get better, they get their parts in and they can start building fa- faster, more people back to work. People get their, and see, that's another thing, how many people are allowed to work together? It does, it's the crew is not the same that they have working on on trucks.
Well, this utility truck, you've already got, I mean, Allison's already got her roving office, right? It's just that the truck's getting old?
No, she 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 has a that two thousand eleven, she has a Chevy truck. It's an extended cab pickup truck, and that's what they're working out of.
She can't keep all her tools on that?
Not not the way the the standards in which you need, no, but on the utility truck, it's a lot more tools that you can put into it.
Thanks.
Yeah, it has no two boxes or anything to go with it. And also, like I said, with 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 having a utility body also having that inverter, not only do you put your your um it got the charging equipment, you can keep things charged. We could take it up there, use a welder, we can use a generator, we can use, when we have to do the bathrooms and winterize, it's a truck that we can go out and work on site.
Mm-hmm.
These are diesel?
No, this one is gas. Yeah, it's when you go diesel, it changes the price.
I don't suppose these trucks are available in electric yet.
Not yet.
Uh, we should probably, I'll get you some information, there may be a source.
Okay.
Okay.
The next slide, Anne Marie, we'll move along. Next slide. All right, now I do believe this question was asked, Councilman Morgan, I do believe you asked about this.
Yep.
If we can go over this, I'll go over this real quick and go into the next slide. Pre-COVID, uh, like I said, the maintenance department, seven days a week in the A M took care of uh Mary Mary Vessel, Swanon Dale, Trailhead, Beach one and two, Canal from Park during the winter. Chippy's Cleaning Service, Clean City Hall, Lewis Department and Canal from Park, seven days a week in the summer. And Monday and Friday during the winter, and the Net House Doc Master's Office was once a week in season. Currently, Chippy's is cleaning City Hall and Lewis Department Monday through Friday. The maintenance department, again, we're doing seven days a week in the A M. The Mary Vessel, Swanon Dale, Trailhead, Beach one and two in season and Canal from Park on winter except for Monday and Friday. Right now, Canal from Park is only open seven to three. That way it it's to to be able to to clean, that's where we're at right now. Ocean Elite Cleaning Service comes in seven days a week. And they're averaging from four to eight P M to clean, and then they lock up all public bathrooms. That's the way it is currently. If you go up to the next slide, Anne Marie. We put on here, but I know on on, I'm sure that you've seen, they put out a bid for cleaning services. Uh, Chippy's Cleaning Services, the City Hall, Lewis Department, Police Department, Ocean Elite Cleaning Services of the five public bathrooms. The community room, of course, because we have a bathroom that's going to be up at the Rollins Center. The Net House Meeting Space and Doc Masters Office, Canal from Park Bathrooms, Maintenance Department Bathrooms. And if you go into the next one, this is where we can get into it. Anne Marie. As you look at number one, the cleaning service alternative, status quo, meaning we are good with it, it where we're at right now, it's if we want to maintain, and I know it's been talked about before, from top to council to people around of having a standard of keeping the bathrooms cleaned more than once a day. Because well, summertime, we work six to two, we work seven to three uh uh during the winter. On the weekends, we work six to twelve in the summer, six to eleven in the winter. So to maintain that, to maintain them to the the cleaning, where it's getting not just cleaned during the day, it's getting cleaned at night. That's why the bid is going out for cleaning, because it's just too much for maintenance to handle that, but we're not. Right now, our status quo, like I said, is we do bathrooms seven days a week. We do bathrooms, open them up in the morning when we get here. Before we leave, we make sure they're, especially during the summer, we go out, make sure everything's stocked, everything's i- i- it cleaned up the best we can. And then uh uh Ocean Elite has been coming in and cleaning and cleaning before they close up and they go around and lock all the bathrooms. On the weekends, I have two guys that come in Saturday, Sunday, along with trash, along with barrels on the beach. They come in for them six hours during the summer and they clean up, they open the bathrooms, make sure everything's cleaned, everything looks right, everything's stocked. And for them six hours, along with doing the trash, make sure before they leave, the bathrooms are cleaned or stocked before they leave. And that's why it says on their status quo. And the the number two, the city approves a bid for cleaning service. And it it, as you see on number three, it goes to the pre-COVID cleaning schedule. I know we're on COVID, which kind of makes it extra cleaning and sanitizing, which we're doing now, and people enjoy, people like it. They like that cleanliness that we've been providing. We did a good job during the summer uh of not only us, Ocean Elite, of keeping it clean, cleaning it sanitized the best to our abilities. And as you see from number four, the reason it needs to get bid out was it it's, they need to hire janitorial service, a cleaning service, because you you just don't know the required staff, the required hours, how exactly uh the level that it would depend on the frequency and time in the cleaning, we're we're it's the unknown. And right now, the way it's working is Ocean Elite is coming in and doing that cleaning tonight. During the winter, they cut back to once a night. During the summer, they come at four and clean at four and then clean at eight. And I do believe I, we missed quote there, I think they stayed till ten to to clean the bathrooms after people are still here, but it they got a better opportunity to clean and lock it up.
Rick, I'm not too clear on number three. That's not an alternative so much as that's going to affect the other three alternatives.
Yeah, I I guess it it, when you go and say pre- pre, yeah, are we going back to normal? What is the normal now? Is it, I don't think we're going back to pre-COVID normal. I think the standards which we've put into it now and and the level that we're at and going to have to maintain going forward, I guess, you know, as times change is is.
Why, why do you think we're going to have to main, to stay with the pre-COVID, I mean, the the current cleaning schedule when we'll no longer be required to?
Well, we put that the city goes to the pre-COVID cleaning schedule, but really, honestly, I I think it's going to we need to change it to keep it clean, because right now, even before pre-COVID, there was a problem with the cleanliness of the bathrooms after we left. You know, you have three, that four o'clock hour of of people that have seen Beach one and Beach two, the disaster it turns into. To be able to maintain that, to be able to bring somebody in at night to clean it and and to stay on top of it. It's a lot of work for them bathrooms. It's 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 a disaster, especially Beach one and two, and Mary Vessels are your main bathrooms that require that extra time and effort to maintain them.
Well, I I'm sure it would, it would be nice to have the bathrooms cleaned continually, but I I wonder what's the the cost difference for pre-COVID and post-COVID for the three alternatives, status quo, cleaning with the bid, bidding it out and hiring staff. Do you have any idea?
Well, that I I I guess that's what number four is about. It it it's requiring staffing level depend on the frequency, time and the cleaning. Where where do we want it? Actually, you you know, the same question you're asking, where where do we want to keep it at? Where, how how ma- how often do we want to clean it? Who do we have? We're going to, status quo is for us, I'm talking for maintenance. We're going to continue to do our seven days a week. We'll do it as soon as we get here, clean the bathrooms, open them up, and we're going to clean before we go and get them stocked and ready to go. What happens after that uh time in which we go? Are we going to stop having that cleaned at night, especially on the weekends, or or are we going to hire a part-time person, a full-time per? I guess it's the unknown. I guess the the to answer your question, there's not a price yet. I guess it's, that's why it's getting bid out. And exactly where do we end up with this? What gets bid out?
W- w- Rick, to cut through it a little bit, if we look at number one, the um, what we're talking about is deleting, if we go back to pre-COVID, deleting the second afternoon, evening cleaning of the public bathrooms. So if we were to delete that um from the bid and from the our staff estimates, that's what I'd be interested in. I I don't know that we need to keep the bathrooms totally pristine twenty-four hours.
So one thing I I do want to mention is that even before COVID hit, we were having discussions about the need for more frequent cleaning of the beach restrooms and merry vessels because of the heavy use. If if you go in there late afternoon or evening hours, quite frankly, sometimes they're just disgusting. Um, and and so while I agree they don't need to be pristine, we don't want people to walk into our restrooms and turn around and and walk out and and decide to go to the fast food restaurant.
So what what's an example of the frequency there being cleaned during COVID? Every couple of hours? Like, how, what's this? What's the rotation? How's that set up?
We're we're doing the bathrooms, we come in at seven in the morning, we open the bathrooms. We're making sure that they're getting cleaned at night, that they're working one time and cleaning it at night and locking them up during the winter, Ocean Elite. We come in at six to make sure checking what they did, making sure that the bathrooms are up to par, we make sure we got, they're stocked. Make sure it's stocked for them later on in the night, the closets that we have. And then we send out the guys uh after lunch to check the bathrooms again, to make sure toilet paper's fine, to make sure nothing's on the floor that's not supposed to be on there, you know, i- i- cleaning. So we're looking at the bathrooms twice a day, and then Ocean Elite is cleaning one time at night right now, currently at night and then closing the bathrooms at night.
And what is the, what's the? Go ahead, go ahead.
I just got to say, I I fortunately or unfortunately, I've never had the pleasure of using a Lewis public bathroom because I have a home fairly close by, but is there a sheet that says like when the last person went or how how is that sort of done as well to make sure you're not doing it too frequently or not frequently enough, for example?
They do that in restaurants, that kind of thing, that kind of sheet record.
Yeah, like A W.
Ri- right now, we don't, because we know we're the ones cleaning it, and right now, the ones at night, but uh through the working with our the facilities here, this part of our maintenance department, that's one of the processes we're working to start setting up logs for people to, hey, I've cleaned it, I've checked it, we know who's been in there, who's done it. But right now, we know who we sent to go check it, we know who
I have a real, I think it's a pretty quick question. Uh, what, by using a vendor to clean the bathrooms in the evening and to lock up the 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 bathrooms, uh, what is that contract worth a year? What does that cost us?
Hello, ring.
So we just did bids, um, we ju- we just received bids. Um, and the low bid that we received was um for the first year, a hundred fifty-four thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars. Second year, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-one. Third year, one hundred sixty-two thousand, sixty-six dollars. And Helen Lorraine, correct me if I'm wrong, but is that one cleaning a day or is that multiple?
Thank you, real.
Oh.
Pardon?
I believe it's multiple.
Okay.
So in other words, that would, that contract would, or that proposal would be for where the vendor would take over a hundred percent the maintenance, the cleaning of the bathrooms, the public bathrooms, is that correct?
Yeah.
That, yeah, I I'm sorry, I have to say I've I've lost, and I apologize, I had to do something about this cat, but uh, so I had to get off for a second, but um, I I've lost the thread just a little bit. Uh, well, we first one question, when we talk about cleaning at City Hall, we're talking about both the civilian and the police parts, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then when we went through these figures just now, one fifty-six, one fifty-nine, one sixty-six, is that is that, would that take the maintenance uh department out of this business or supplement what they're doing? I I I'm sorry, I got, I lost the thread a little bit here.
We saw this as taking them out of it.
Okay, so that would relieve them of what we've got up here on the screen as the status quo?
Yes.
Okay. So if if, I mean, going back and thinking about, I've forgotten the numbers, I've got them written down for someone. Um, we're we're looking at a hundred and thirty-six thousand for two maintenance workers, and I realize that's not one on doing bathrooms, don't get me wrong, but that is if we hired two people. I mean, what I'm trying to do is compare obviously the in-house capabilities to if we went completely. If we hired two people at a hundred and thirty-six thousand, where would that? And we how would that affect, if at all, uh, in-house cleaning versus using one or more, we've got up here, Chippy's uh Elite, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I'm just trying to compare the personnel, the 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 personnel, in-house personnel costs with the contractor costs. I'm sorry, it took me a a long time to articulate that, but that's that's where I'm going with this.
Well, I think the other thing that we need to make sure we understand is the um the level of cleaning, not only the frequency, but the level. Uh, Anne Marie, correct me if I'm wrong, were you one of the contractors, and it might have been that Ocean, the Ocean one, I forget the rest of the name. Thank you. They, were they not like, uh, I'll call it sterilizing the bathrooms to a level of COVID to be COVID compliant or driven by COVID standards?
We did have them doing some um additional sanitizing, and I'm not sure that I'm I'm trying to read the the bid and it's on my screen, um, but it's sideways. It says any cleanings added for wiping down and disinfection due to COVID will be half the stated daily price. So so, right, so the supplemental COVID cleanings would be added to this, but would be at a reduced cost. But yeah, they do
Way you can take
They do disinfecting and sanitizing, but but our staff were disinfecting as well.
Right. Is there any way you could take these four alternatives and put a dollar figure with each one?
But I think we need to to try.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be helpful for me.
And and can you also crosswalk that to the requests in, a- again, if at all, in increased personnel?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Rick, have you, have you given us your opinion on which option you think is the most efficient or? Because obviously with any of these, you'd probably have to have a level of oversight anyway, even if we're using an outside service, right?
Yeah, what Bonnie just said about bringing in another one, we ran that option. I mean, the the amount of money, we're not sure, like I said, what type of cleaning it is. But if we get two full-time employees, the one employee we're getting is to help us with maintenance, to help us with with trash truck, and they'll be helping with cleaning the bathrooms during the day, just like everyone else. To get two full-time employees, you're you're requiring people to work at night, so it'd have to be a shift at night. Are you taking away my maintenance workers from morning and putting some of them at night to rotate? And this is a seven-day-a-week job. It's Monday through, you know, Sunday, it's it's, and especially on the weekend, that's where that extra work is. So if we get two extra full-time employees, that employee is just going to be doing bathrooms, working at night, and we'll have to rotate them. So I'm losing people during the day anyway, and can one person clean seven days a week? Holidays included.
Or would they do it? I think the other thing you need to think about is, uh, if Anne Marie, I think you shared with me that the bid you have for complete takeover is from Northern Delaware, is that correct? The company's from Northern Delaware?
So we we determined that that was not um a qualified bid.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, there were, there were some issues with the bid.
So the 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 bid that you have for the complete takeover is a local person?
Yeah.
Or local vendor?
Yeah.
How many bids did you receive, Anne Marie?
Well, two technically, two, two and only one that that met all of the big criteria.
Okay. In the this proposals, do they say, you know, how many um service people they would have i- assigned to to accomplish the job?
Um, so typically, they've had two, but that's really at their discretion. You know, if they want to have one person and it just takes them longer.
Sure.
Um, they could do that.
And do they supply all their, do they bring all the materials and all the tools that are necessary to do the job?
They're supposed to supply the tools, we supply them with They're supposed to supply the tools. We supply them with the toilet paper, the soap.
And there's stuff to clean, the, the floors, clean the sinks and so forth?
Yes, would, hold on one. Yeah, we supply them. Yeah, the trash liners, the toilet paper, the stuff to clean the floor, the, the. Yeah, cleaning product and cleaning tools according to the contract is what they would have to bring in.
Like an independent contractor.
Right.
So I, I mean, what I sense from, well, maybe I'm projecting, but what I have and, and what I sense from others is a, a little confusion about how all, how all this works out, both from a personnel matter, personnel point, a, a functional point and a monetary point. Can we get sort of a side, more of a side-by-side?
Yeah.
We'll have to come back. Question I have, um, for, I guess for everyone, because I, um, Tim and I did a tour recently of some of our neighboring municipal facilities and they had like janitor sort of facilities embedded in the buildings, like a janitor's closet and things like that. Are we set up that way? So if we were to bring this in-house, do, do we even have a sort of building facilities, like a service sinks and things like that, that you'd find in a janitor's closet?
As, as Canal from Park is set up, where they actually have a wash station, they have a, a supply closet. Mary Vessels and um, Swan and Dale has a closet on the side and we have a, a, for an attachment for where the, the hose can be upfront. The Beach One has their closet and water and everything in the center. Beach Two, that's a little tricky. It's, it's, their supply, if you open that center door, well, not really. Trailhead is something that would have to be put there. We have to take supplies to the trailhead.
What do you mean, Rick? Would you explain what you just said about Beach Two? What, when you said not really, what did that mean?
Well, the center i- is where, is, is you can hardly squeeze in it and we have supplies right out front, not much, but you can't really stock it. It's not Beach One. Beach One is open. You can come in. You have a cleaning station in the back where the shower is emptying to underneath. And it comes in the center where we have all our supplies. And usually we work out of Beach One to do Beach One and Two. Beach Two doesn't have the, the, the room that's allowed and there's not much. We have a little shelf there with a, a few supplies, but it, it's not much room for anything else in there.
So you, you end up, your crew will end up carrying materials from Beach One?
Beach One, yes. We go from, take extra toilet paper, soap and everything over there to clean. And we do the same thing with the trailhead. We take ours there. We'd like to build a closet, like maybe inside the, the men's bathroom that, you know, i- in a corner somewhere, but that's our discussion for another day.
That was helpful. Thanks, Rick.
So I, I guess, do you want this issue of cleaning staffing to, for us to massage it, get, put something in a table format that, that includes better cost estimates and then?
Yeah, that's what you're gonna have to do, Amory. Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
And the other, the other piece of it ha- is how uh, the additional staffing, I, I mean, I, I recognize this additional staff is, is going to be used for a bunch of different functions. So how does all that wind into this?
Right.
Or not, yeah.
All right, Rick, did you have more?
It's just one more slide.
Please.
It's just the, the last slide. I mean, you, you put priorities on there. I mean, if you ask me, everything's a priority and you guys need to approve everything, but.
Thank you, Rick.
Wasn't the only option he could put out.
We actually had a one between, behind, instead of one, two, one through five, he had one with all of these.
Yeah, exactly. But you know, I was, right?
He did, he did. He had them all listed as number one till Ellen Lorraine, um.
That's very useful.
You all got, Mary, you need to talk to Ellen Lorraine. I mean, she's hard. I know she works on everybody's budget here.
These in the order, these are the priorities in the order in which they need to be considered?
It, we, you know, like anyone and everybody doing a budget, you, they always ask what's priority in case nothing, what do you put it on? The only reason cleaning services in the bottom for the discussion we just had. We have to adjust it and, and look at it and put out other, but yes, if you're looking at one through four, what's our need? Yes, we need the trash truck, we need the leaf vac, the additional staff, utility truck. I mean, if you're gonna twist my arm and tell me how to put it in there, that's how we'll go.
Yeah, it's Christmas in February.
Yeah.
Just gotta, I mean, if I understand this correctly, maybe I'm wrong, but I would think that the trash truck, the leaf vacuum and the utility truck all arguably can come out of MSA.
Right.
Okay, so that's just, just in terms of pots of money.
Might be a stretch.
Might be, but it still has to do with maintaining the street.
With it, so.
Well, but the difference is that, so that's over an MSA or capital budget, one or the other. And then so it's, it's the, um, it's the, the staff and the cleaning services who have come out of operating budget.
Right. I would think the trash truck would certainly come out of, out of, of not, not necessarily out of MSA, but capital projects.
Yeah.
If we're, and a leaf vacuum, we're looking at something that has a life expectancy of better 10 years.
Yeah, my, my only, my only point is that, that these priorities come from, with, with different funding streams.
Absolutely. And, you know, in terms, you know, also look at the funding, his priorities in light of the public perception. And if you look at cleaning services, they would say that they're pretty high on the list. Uh, because if you've got the public who are coming here and the restrooms are not kept to a certain standard, then you've got a problem. That's right. Can you take a minute and explain, maybe this is a question for Ellen Lorraine? Uh, Ellen Lorraine, uh, are there any particular either requirements or exceptions for funds that are described as MSA that we should be aware of as we go through this, the budget?
There are certain items that MSA monies can be spent on.
Okay.
And related, um, our expenses, uh, debt service, um, are another one, uh, street lighting and some capital projects relating pedestrians.
So then, and these all qualify for MSA funds, is that correct?
The trash track, I would need to double check on. We have put in the leaf vac into MSA and the additional lease payment for the street sweeper as well as miscellaneous sidewalk crossover repairs, which we tried to.
And Ellen Lorraine, we have plenty of ways to use up our MSA allocation, don't we? I mean, it's not as though if we don't put it towards the leaf vac, we're gonna waste it.
Right.
There's plenty of opportunity to use it for lots of things, but.
Absolutely. And we get one another, I'm trying to find it in here.
About a hundred ninety thousand.
A hundred thousand?
It's about, it's under.
Sixteen.
What page is that on? I've seen it, but I can't, oh, here it is.
Page twenty-two. So, so we're looking at. Maybe I'm in the wrong spot. We received a hundred and sixteen thousand, three fifty?
Correct.
That's what's proposed, right?
Correct.
And, and we know that for sure that that's gonna be funded that way? You don't know anything until June thirtieth.
July first.
Yeah, right, depending on what time they finish. You, you have the governor's proposed budget, which leaves it at six million. That is subject to what happens with the legislature. But generally speaking, uh, the governor, there was a period during the Markel, early in the Markel administration where, where we got very little, like nothing.
Well, but that was after the two thousand eight turn.
I have to say, it, it's been rebuilt, it's been building and Governor Carney has made a commitment to keep it, to keep it at six million.
Yeah, I think it's been at six million for at least three or four years now, hasn't it?
I think it went, it went from four to six, I think last year and this year.
He put it at ten last, if you recall, he put it.
Yeah, that came down.
And then COVID hit and, you know.
Yep.
It went back.
The six is probably pretty reliable, but Ted's absolutely right. You know, you don't know until the dust settles on the state budget.
Right. But getting back to the priorities that are in front of us on this, on the screen, uh, I have written in my notes here that the trash truck, the leaf vacuum and the utility truck would be uh, candidates for MSA expenditures, is that funding, is that correct?
Either MSA or, or the transfer tax or the general capital projects.
Right.
So.
It would come out of the general fund.
So I think that the main points are that number one, number two and number four come out of our other operate, or our other funds, which are primarily capital. And number three and number five come out of the general fund, which is where all the operating is and which has more strain on it.
Right. Rick, thank you. Do you have anything else you need to add, Rick?
Yes, if I could, please, I mean, thank you for listening to the presentation. Uh, thank you to Council Amory and Lorraine. And if I could, this is, I know we have two new council member, for the council people that were with us last year and approved our front-end loader. Uh, I thank you because we worked wonders with it and I hope we satisfied and, and kept the beach up to satisfaction. It's done wonders and helped us a lot. And I appreciate it. I wanted to say thank you again for that. I know this is from last year, but w- w- we did what we wanted to do with it and it's working great for us and it's really helped and improved. And it, it's more efficient up at the beach, so thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, have a good weekend.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, if Janet's with us, we could elevate or bring Janet to the table and we could talk about Parks and Marina.
I'm gonna go off camera just for a second. I could, I'll still be able to hear you.
Okay. Oh, Parks and Marina, you said.
I don't know why, I, I think I've lost my camera.
We can hear you, but we're not seeing you.
Yeah, and it's not giving me an option for video, to turn on the video.
Can you teach me how to do that?
Nothing in the lower right-hand corner of your screen?
Wait, something, I think Anne Marie just worked some.
Are you on the iPad, on an iPad?
You are, you can turn this down.
Here I am.
Good job.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Um, so we're talking about um, Parks and Marina Administrator expenses. Um, so we have for the full-time uh, regular Parks and Marina Administrator, a proposed um, budget of forty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five. Um, and then um, just moving down the white items, this is on page eleven. Um, let's see, there's no um, no budgeting for seasonal regular bonuses or um, other contingencies. We have for um, payroll taxes, thirty-six hundred twenty-five. Um, health insurance, seventy-six hundred twenty-five. Um, life insurance for benefits, three hundred. Pension, forty-seven hundred thirty. Um, and then just general expenses for the department for advertising, conferences and seminars. Um, and any miscellaneous um, office items comes to about um, seven hundred and fifty um, dollars. So it's, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Are there any questions on that?
Nope. I'm saying.
I don't, I don't have a lot of uh, requests for items like Rick does, so I think we'll be pretty quick.
Well, I, I guess the one, the one other thing we need to go through in this is the Marina budget.
Right, right. I have, I have that next. I was just going.
Okay.
I would like.
Can I, I have a question, please?
Yeah.
Law, account number five one oh eight, seasonal regular personnel. Uh, is this uh, i- i- is this for two people? Or how many seasonal people do you hire?
Um, I, I just have, I, I don't have any seasonal employees under Parks. It's just me. So that's why there's nothing, that's why there's nothing allocated there.
Right. And what, where I'm confused is, is that, uh, I thought that you also had the Marina and I thought.
And that is a separate, that's a separate budget. So I, I will go, I'll go over that next. Um, that's on page seventeen.
Okay.
And, and they both are seasonal. We have two employees there that are both seasonal, so I will go over that.
Okay, I was going based upon the label of the Parks and Marina Administrator expenditures. Okay, so, okay.
Yeah.
So Marina is a separate, no problem.
So that, that is just for the operational expenses and, and administrative expenses of the Parks and Marina Administrator and Department. But then the Marina falls under that, under a separate budget.
Uh, Jane and I have a question for you. Um, uh, for the uh, your uh, use of electricity and water in the parks, uh, they, does that uh, do you get hit, does your budget get uh, hit for that or is that under this general city fund?
Um, the Parks and Recreation Budget, which is scheduled to be reviewed on the twenty-sixth. Um, that, that does have utilities under it because of um, primarily the tennis court and pickleball court, basketball court lights. Um, but that, um, Ellen Lorraine, if you can help me a little bit with that, where that comes from?
That's on page fourteen.
Operating.
It's operating, okay. And the Parks and Rec budget is on page fourteen. Due for discussion on the twenty-sixth of February.
Ben, before you move over to um, page fourteen, on page eleven, and maybe this is really for Ellen Lorraine. The um, increase in administrative expenses and the drop in healthcare and life insurance. That, what, what, explain to that?
Well, in.
Was that, was that because of Allison's um, being reallocated to facilities?
I think there was a change in the subscription, yes.
But the administrator expense went up while the health insurance went down.
I, we were budgeting a figure. Um, and I don't think it was for the entire year when we created the budget for FY twenty-one.
It's almost as though the administrator got allocated, uh, the, or the insurance got allocated out and the administrator's salary didn't. But I'm just, I'm puzzled by the, by the discrepancy between one going up and others coming down.
Yeah, they could have just, didn't adjust that line last, uh, in the current fiscal year.
Okay.
I think also when Allison moved, you probably moved her salary over, even though she was double-hatted for a while in the twenty-one.
But it looks as though her insurance was, was moved faster than her salary was, that's.
Well, when you look at the amended, it dropped from the adopted budget from forty-three to twenty-six, two fifty.
Janet didn't work a full year, right?
Oh, that's what I'm saying is we pulled, we pulled out.
Yeah.
We pulled Allison out, so it dropped, that's why it dropped twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
For eighteen thousand.
Yeah. Okay, so sorry, back to fourteen.
Actually, back to seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah. Okay, um, so going back to the regular and um, seasonal employment, we have a seasonal dock master. Um, he works from April first to um, November, the end of November. Um, and he is uh, budgeted for thirty-two thousand. Um, last year, um, you'll notice that that is higher. Um, last year, he came on board uh, in July. Um, so that's why um, last year's expenditures are a little bit obviously lower. Um, the overtime is allocated at fifteen hundred. Um, he's very conscious of working within the hours. He will stay late if there's. He's very conscious of working within the hours. He will stay late if there's a, an unexpected or late arrival, a large, um, vessel coming into city dock or, or Canalfront Park that may need assistance if they haven't been here. To our, our marinas in the past, he will assist. So he does keep that minimal. I think it, it's, um, a reasonable amount. It is up a little bit, but again, um, as I mentioned, he started in July of last year versus having a, a full season. We have the seasonal regular staff, um, who is the assistant dock master. Again, he started, and this all predates me, so forgive me if my dates are a little bit off. But he started, um, this is Marcus and he started in, uh, May. So again, he was, um, he didn't have the full season. He's a young man. He went back to, um, his educational studies in high school. So he left a little bit earlier in the season. But we anticipate he'll be here, um, for, you know, the full season. Um, that's why that's a bit higher. Payroll taxes at thirty-six-hundred-seventy-five, unemployment at four thousand. I don't think we had anybody, um, collecting, so that's been, um, that has remained consistent. Again, the utilities and telephone, um, that went down just a little bit based on our review of the usage. So hopefully that will hold. The bit, uh, maintenance of the buildings. You'll see that that went up a little bit. Again, partially that's, um, the cleaning services, um, as Rick had mentioned earlier. The Canalfront Park, uh, restrooms are cleaned and that is included in, um, partially in this budget. The maintenance of the grounds, let's see.
Excuse me, did you say that the cleaning of the bathrooms are partially funded? Is that what you said?
Um, I, I, no, they are, they are funded, um, through, through the contract that Rick was talking about and through the, um, the maintenance staff that clean the bathroom as well.
Well, let me understand that, Janet. You're not saying that Rick allocates some of his costs to the Marina?
No.
So the maintenance buildings line is the outside contractor?
Y- yes.
It includes, um, other companies that we need to contract with to make repairs.
Okay, so that's repairs and cleaning?
And cleaning, yes. I'm sorry.
And outside in both cases?
And, and, and again, this is, is this only at the Marina or the Canalfront Park area, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the, the actual, um, Marina would be considered under the grounds section.
Okay.
So as, as Ellen Lorraine had said, if there were, um, maintenance or repairs for the building, for the net house, um, for the bathrooms, for any of the dock masters and assistant dock masters work areas within the net house, then that come out of the maintenance for buildings. And then anything related to, um, maintenance and or repair, um, of the grounds would be considered, um, the docks per se. Does that clarify?
Like pedestal repairs, replacements, that type of thing.
Any kind of signage, any of the boardwalk maintenance. Any, any other issues with, um, the ladders, the gangways, that would all be under, under the grounds budget.
So like, i- if the, um, dock master was, if he had to replace any of the, uh, dock material, deck material that's used, you know, on the boardwalk area, that would come out of that line, is that correct?
Yes, for, not, not, not for the boardwalk of Canalfront Park, but the boardwalk of the Marina. It's so.
Oh, right.
Decking, the decking.
That's correct. I, yes, that's right. Thank you.
Love the repairs.
He did, he did quite a bit of maintenance, um, this summer, um, on, on the dock. Flipping boards, um, but I think there will be some repairs necessary. Some of the boards might not be able to be flipped. So for the safety purposes, um, there may be some repairs there.
Anticipated this coming year, this year?
Yes, possibly.
Is the only revenue line towards the Marina, the, um, one, four, four-one-four-zero-zero, the, the rentals of the Canal Dock and Marina, is that the only attributable revenue to the Marina?
What page, Andrew, please?
Uh, this is on, I'm on page three of twenty-eight.
Thank you.
The second bold line, re- rental city docks and it, we're budgeting a hundred and, a hundred and eight for this year.
Right. Thank you.
The revenue is, um, from the, the lottery and then the transient slips.
Is there any revenue that can be gained or that, um, ma- ma- mayor, maybe you could speak to this from the, what, uh, not this year, obviously, probably not so much, but the, the net house, like for events, is there, is that attributable to, that doesn't come from that revenue line?
The net house is only available for nonprofits and there is no rent charged.
Correct. Is that, is that something that we are bound to, Ted, or is that?
City council agreed to, at, at the time it was established.
Ellen Lorraine, looking at, um, I'm sorry, Tim, were you following up on that?
Well, I guess I was, is that, can you describe what kind of agreement that was?
Something that city council voted on in terms of how the net house was gonna be used. And when we, when we determined, when we determined, uh, the use of the net house.
And was that associated with the c- the creation of Canalfront Park? I don't, I don't have a handle on that, Ted.
It was, it came up at about the same ti- well, when the park was finished, it, we came up as an item that was put before council and it was voted on and that was the decision that was made.
And Ted, I'm sorry, but I came in late. What was the, uh, decision that was made?
The decision was made that was the net house would only be used by nonprofits and therefore no rent would be collected as a, as a facility that was, you know, available. Now that, I think we do charge a cleaning fee if, if necessary, right, Janet? If someone leaves it a mess, we do charge a cleaning fee, but other than that, it's only for nonprofits that use. So we have the Boy Scouts who meet in there, the Sea Scouts who meet in there. But Camera Club, I think, has met in there. And Janet, you can probably el- elaborate on other organizations.
We've had, the Cape Artists have been using it, um, during COVID because they lost some space. A- actually, right now, um, the city buildings aren't open, um, because of COVID, so it's all, well, all of that has been suspended, but the Sea Scouts are, I would say, the most, uh, regular users. They're weekly, others are, um, monthly. We've had, we've had Lewis and Bloom in there as well. So it does get utilized by the, the nonprofits within the, the city.
The friends who can out from the park, uh, use it for their meetings, um.
Their first community village used it at one point. I believe the farmer's market has had presentations there in the past.
Yeah. And, and i- is that building, uh, uh, available for use year round? It has heat in it, for example? Okay.
It's only the, it's only the, the, what you see at the street level, the lower spaces used for storage.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just curious, do we ever, I, I don't know, do, do we ever allow the use of the net house in connection with, um, weddings in Canalfront Park or anything like that?
Has there ever been a re, is, have we, that ever been discussed?
We would have to put a lot more facilities in there. Remember the Marina's office, there's only one bathroom in there?
Right. I, I, I was thinking more as a preparation area. To your point, I think, Tim, the only, the only time I remember, and I don't think it ever came to council, is a number of years ago, there was a yoga teacher who had lost her lease, I think, on wherever her commercial space was, and she made a request to use the space. Um, and I, I don't believe that was approved.
That's right.
That, that's the only thing I, that's the only time I can remember it, there was ever a, a not, a, a not for, a not, not-for-profit, requested use of that space.
Yeah.
The deck is used very frequently by families who have dinner there. I mean, all summer long, as COVID was going. Those ta- the three tables that were donated by the Greater Lewis Foundation were being occupied by groups of small groups of people who got together for dinner or takeout, whatever. So the space, the outdoor space is used a lot, the indoor space is used for meetings of nonprofits.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the furnishings in there, unless they've been upgraded since the last time I was in there, are pretty, um, basic.
Primitive. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was only in the, in that space one time and it is not a fancy space, but I kept thinking about, um, its location is terrific and its views out the backside on the canal side are very, very nice. And it has a large deck adjacent to it. It seems to me that there would be some opportunity there for the city to have, um, some rental space for small groups to, to use.
The cities, uh, they, they sponsored Zumba that was on the deck.
Right.
Uh, for last year. So those are the kinds of things that's happened. We've never, we've never turned it into a revenue stream.
Yeah.
And the use of the, the number of nonprofits that used to meet in churches and other buildings around. And a lot of those places have been closed because of church rooms, the church meeting facilities are, like St. Peter's was very generous with their space. For many, many years, but St. Peter's space is being used regularly, uh, by a lot of different groups, uh, that are related to the church. And so they, they've had to cut back on how, on the availability. And also they looked at the cost of, of maintaining the space.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll just add, I mean, I've been in there a bunch of times for Greater Lewis Community Village stuff back in the early days of that organization. And the bathroom is, you know, the bathroom is very basic and sort of doubles as the supply room. Uh, and it's not, I'm sure it's not ADA compliant. At least I don't think it is.
Might be.
Not, not with all the stuff, well, maybe, I, what do I know?
I don't know. I, I haven't been in there in a while.
Yeah, the other problem is that the heating system in there is, um, it's, it's not robust, at least not in my experience. Uh, so, I mean, if we were to use that, I, I get where you're going with this, Tim, but if we were to use that for, um, for more of a profit center, we, I think we'd have to make some pretty substantial improvements.
And so, oh, I'm sure that, but we've never done a feasibility study, have we?
Actually, the original, the original design for that building, that, that building was, you know, that's a, that's a salvage building.
Right.
That building was drug over from the old, where, where, where Rob lives right now. It was drug over from where Cape Shore's used to be and, uh, put there and it, uh, was basically used, uh, when the, when the boatyard was operational. It was used as offices for the boatyard. And when Canalfront Park was designed, there was a, there was a plan to put, uh, an extension on the back, which would have made it much more feasible to have been used. That plan was never executed.
And I assume that was related to funding, is that correct?
Yeah, basically, actually, uh, pretty much, yeah. It would have been, you know, well north of a hundred thousand dollars to improve the building to the extent that it would be an operational, a functional space. The lower level of the building in very severe nor'easters has been known to flood.
Ted, that, that estimate, I mean, gee, that's gotta have some, some time on it.
Oh, yeah, it's at least, it's at least ten, uh, at least probably fifteen years old.
Yeah.
So you could probably double it by now.
Right, right.
Ellen Lorraine, I've got a question, an accounting question on, on page three where Andrew drew us to. The actual columns. In the actual columns, the bolded line for zero-zero-zero-zero is the sum of the line, the non-bolded lines below it in that account. But in the budget line, you don't distribute, you, you don't make an estimate of what the revenues will be for the different lines?
No, we have not done that previously. We've done one line.
Okay, so we're not making a separate projection of what the Canal Dock will earn and the slips will earn, for instance. Is that, uh, general throughout the revenue?
It's similar to parking violations. It's similar to parking meter collection. We don't budget by location, we budget in total.
Okay. When you do your, uh, accounting manual, uh, could you make that an item in it to just?
Janet, I think we're back to your.
I had another question and I, maybe this is for Janet. Janet, uh, if we wanted to understand the total cost of the Marina and the total cost of the parks, we would, of course, allocate a Parks and Marina Administrator to those two. Do you have any sense of how much, I, I, I know you haven't been here that long. And maybe it's a better question for Anne Marie who has now. But what, what percent of your time is spent on, in which category? How, well, I should say, it's not just your time, but, but of that whole block of Marina and City Dock. I'm sorry, I'm just thinking of page eleven. How would you allocate page eleven to pages fourteen and seventeen?
Okay, allocating page eleven to fourteen and seventeen, so how, great. How much of my time am I allocating to parks versus the Marina and dock? Is that your question?
And the other people covered on page eleven, yeah.
She's the only one on page eleven.
Say again?
She's the only employee covered on page eleven.
She's the only one on page eleven.
You're right, there's zero lines on, on the.
Right. I, so. Also, the other responsibilities that you get that aren't parks or Marina.
That's right, she does have others. All right, tougher question then. So Ellen Lorraine, this is over to you, you're the numbers whiz. How much of page eleven would you allocate to pages fourteen and seventeen if we wanted to understand the total costs?
Seventeen, okay.
I'm just guessing, but I would say twenty-five percent. Does that sound reasonable, Janet?
Yeah, I, I, I definitely, um, have more time in the parks and with the park commissioners. Of course, I had a little less than three months, um, with the Marina and with the dock master and assistant dock master. It's, I'm actually looking forward to having a full season with them. We are fortunate to have a very, very qualified, uh, dock master who is self-directed. He keeps me informed. He's very safety-conscious, so if there are issues at the Marina that, you know, pose a safety risk to, um, the visitors to the Marina or to, um, staff or, you know, the general public, he's very responsive to that. So I, I definitely, I would say twenty-five to thirty percent. Uh, it could very well change, um, without such a responsive dock master and assistant dock master.
And most of the rest would be devoted to parks?
The, the rest would be to the, devoted to parks, yes. There's, there's also, um, office work here with, um, issuing permits for weddings, for events, for bonfires. So, yeah, there's, uh, grant writing, um, the summer concert series. I'm responsible for, um, booking, uh, the summer concert series and then being there on site each night when those concerts are taking place and the follow-up and preparation for that. So it's not quite, you know, twenty-five, thirty to seventy-five, you know, seventy, but, um, between the parks and the Marina.
It's just, I, I think it's useful. Okay, it's just, I, I think it's useful for us to understand the total cost of certain functions. And just as I've asked Ellen Lorraine to give us the total cost of the police. Uh, it sounds to me as though if you take a quarter of the sixty-four thousand for. Parks and Marina Administrator. Take a quarter of that and add it to the Marina, you, you've added another sixteen thousand. Um. And so the Marina is. That much more in the red. That's just what I wanted to pursue. Thank you.
There, there is the seasonality of the Marina. Basically, uh, you know, the, there's, you know, it really, it is a seasonal situation, much more so than the parks.
And I'm, which way does that cut?
Well, I think there's, there's intense periods where there's a little more work at, at down in the, in the, in the Marina.
We're looking at a full year budget, so that, that evens out. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
No. Are we still working on the Marina and City Dock expenditure document, page seventeen? Is that what we're still?
That we're, we're almost to the end, but yeah. Just a, a few more items.
Okay.
Um, we have the dredging project, which was to start this here, this, uh, this year, and I believe it started today, Mayor.
That's right.
Yeah.
So I understand they're out there.
Okay, I know there will be a lot of happy boaters. I've got a lot of inquiries.
Yes.
Um. So then moving down below that, um, dues and subscriptions. Um. John does, um, we do get Marina Magazine and there are other publications that the dock master, um. Does subscribe to to keep, uh, up to date on, and most current on issues with marinas and, and marine safety.
Aren't we also, Janet, ask, aren't we also listed in the, uh, places to dock? I, I know a few years ago, we looked into doing that up and down the East Coast. I think that's like. The bulk of this subscription is, is that, I believe.
Okay.
Okay.
I will look and make sure.
I want to verify that we're still doing that. I know.
I will do that.
Early on, because. Between the city dock and, and the Canalfront Park dock, we obviously have transient slips that. Are, can be rented in that, that listing.
We, I don't.
Are we not doing that anymore?
Recently been advertising, I think.
I was gonna ask that, it, it looks like there was an advertising line item that's not been executed the last couple of years. Was that what you were using it for?
It's what it was used for.
Budgeted for.
Yeah. I think you'll go, if you go back, you'll see where it was, uh. You know, it was like a thousand dollars.
Thousand bucks and then seven hundred and not, and zero the last couple of years.
And it's been zeroed out. That might be something that, um, the dock master wants to look back into. They published them a year.
It may also have gone online.
It may have, but they published them a year in advance. Uh. So, and there's one that from mid-Atlantic region.
Well, and typical, e- even for online advertising, there would be a cost, so.
There'd be a fee, yeah.
I think honestly, I think with the transitions and dock masters, it might have.
All enough. How do we determine, um, like, the. Revenue fees and the, the fees that we're charging to, to dock, for example, not, not necessarily the, 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 um. Seasonal slips that are lotteryed out, but the. You know, closer to, um. To town.
So, I, I know last year, um. And, and the year before that, Allison did quite a bit of research. At what other marinas in the area were doing, and I know John. Had done some stuff last year and we were starting to evaluate it.
So you're looking around, you're just looking at what the current, the standard rates are? Okay, cool.
Rates were based initially upon what was being charged at the Annapolis waterfront.
Ellen Lorraine, I've got another accounting question for you. Uh, and I think I ask this every year, so forgive me. The forty thousand for dredging, it's a, it's a two-year, uh, um. Plan. So we figured that in two years, we'll need to dredge again for eighty thousand. What happened? We're not going to spend the forty thousand this year, this fiscal year. What happens to the forty thousand? How do we squirrel it away for, uh, the next year?
So we actually. Transfer money from the general operating checking account to the dredging checking account. And we increased, uh, the budget from thirty to forty to account for the, what the bids came in this year.
But the forty thousand, we won't spend that. So when we get to actuals at the end of this coming fiscal year. There will be forty thousand to the good, but we won't really be. So how will we, how will we track the fact that we don't have that forty thousand, in fact?
Well, we budgeted thirty thousand. Actually, we amended the budget for sixty thousand for FY twenty-one. So we will shift twenty, sixty thousand over and there's ninety thousand in the account now.
Yeah.
So we will.
Spend the money and put it in the account we regarded as spent.
Yes.
And as, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, and that, that, those dollars come out of the general operating, is that correct, Ellen Lorraine?
Yeah.
We're on, let's talk about, let's talk about dredging for a minute, please. Uh, what is dredged?
These slips of Canalfront Park.
And only those slips, is that correct?
The only ones that have needed to be dredged, yes.
Okay, and in the past, is that also, I mean, is that the only area that focused for dredging? Is that, is that correct? Okay.
Well, I should say more than, there is more than that. We've dredged. Over to where it's the kayak and paddleboard launches as well. We've dredged that far over. So it's Canalfront Park. So we're not over, we're, we're between out the overfalls and the other end of the park.
Right. And, uh, what is the, and the, the people who rent docks, slips there are. They're under a lease agreement with the city, is that correct?
Correct.
It's a, a one-year lease with a one-year renewal option, and then it goes back to the lottery.
And what does it cost? And is that based upon how large a boat is put in the slip? Is that how it's done?
Yep.
Okay. So a twenty-foot boat would be more expensive than a sixteen-foot, is that correct? Something like that?
Well, up to, it's up to a twenty-five-foot boat is one price and then. Beyond that, up to fifty-foot and John, the dock master is cautious about. The size of boats and the types of boats, um, but then it goes up to another, another fee. A different cost point.
Okay. Um. I'm sorry, I'm, uh, no, I'm not sorry at all. Uh, uh, I'm just not up to speed on all the, on the revenue side of this. What kind of revenue are we realizing by renting the dock, the slips? What is that?
A hundred and eight thousand.
A total of a hundred and eight thousand?
That's what's on page three.
Okay, and, uh. And what are, are all of our expenses associated with those docks? Is that, uh? A hundred and eight?
One twenty-eight.
That would be on page seventeen.
Yeah.
Eight thousand.
So we have a, we have a, we're operating at a loss of twenty-one thousand dollars. Is that, is that the math? Do you all agree?
That would seem accurate, yes.
And when was the last time we did a, a, a dock rate, uh, study to make sure that our rates are. Are competitive and.
I believe it was two thousand nineteen that Allison did that, but I could, I could check the files and, and verify that, but I believe it was two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, and my recollection is that we were at the top, at the high end of what was being charged to the area.
Yeah, you are. You're absolutely right, Bonnie.
Not the highest, but we certainly weren't at the lower end.
I think you were very close to being the highest.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and the, uh.
There's another piece of information here that, as we haven't discussed yet, and that is that we didn't, we, we're, what, we normally have been on a two-year cycle. But we haven't dredged for three years. So we've been budgeting, that's where that ninety thousand comes from, because it's three years' worth of the thirty thousand dollars that were put into that fund. It has not been expended.
Uh-huh. Are there any other, um, are there any other, uh, fees associated with having the canal run through the town? That are, uh, dredge-related? That the city incurs?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
Do we still, do we still share the, um, mobilization fee with other participants in the dredging? So I had a question. If we've got ninety thousand in the bank. And we're just gonna spend sixty thousand.
No, we're gonna spend forty.
Forty.
Oh, we don't need, you're not gonna spend forty, you're just, that's what we're setting aside. That's what we're taking out.
For next year.
Right.
Right, so this year we're gonna dredge. We're dredging right now.
Right.
And we're gonna spend.
I don't know, I don't know what it came in at. You won't know until it's officially done.
Somewhere in the sixty thousand dollar range, probably. So why?
How much did you get of actual price?
Eighty-four thousand.
Eighty-four thousand.
Okay, so I assume that we're going to, to set aside for this coming fiscal year of forty thousand, because we think it's gonna be more expensive to dredge in the future.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and it may not be because we didn't dredge for three years. So there is obviously more dredging to be done, more cubic yards to be dredged this year than there would have been if we had dredged on a two-year cycle. So that, um, make, if we go back to a two-year cycle, it may actually come down.
Did, did we ever make any headway on that, if I remember this, the issue? On the whole wet weight of the dredge spoils versus the dry weight of the bench toilets? I know you tried. No luck.
Yeah, I've tried. Evelyn Muubauer has tried. Uh, kind of Hill Open Acres has tried. You know, Denrick, and actually, it's the Army Corps recognizes whatever cubic yards you pump. Is the cubic yard, is the cubic yards they, they recognize.
Right, wet.
As wet.
Right.
So, and if you, if you look at all the scientific data. Dredge spoil, once it's dewatered. Drops to about twenty percent of what, of what the amount was dredged. So it's about eighty percent water.
Right. Okay, yeah, I heard this from a couple of years ago and we can't get it to change.
It hasn't changed, unfortunately.
All right, thought I checked.
Spoils are, the spoils are pumped into that area. Uh, uh, between the canal and the, and. And the city street.
Extremely fortunate to have that. We are very, I mean, you have no idea what a gift that is. If not, if we didn't have that, we'd have to, we'd have to haul it. Which is extremely messy and extremely expensive.
Yeah. Um.
The spoils of war, the spoils of dredging.
Yeah, exactly. Now, uh, Cape Shore is actually, at one time. When Canalfront Park was first created, Cape Shore's actually was able to utilize. Uh, some of the, uh, spoil for an underlayment of their beach. But it, but the sand that was pumped out of the canal was deemed too coarse to be used as top layer of sand. So. I don't know if you were involved in Cape Shore's at that point, Rob, or not?
Um, I was not.
Okay. But there was a whole big issue about taking spoil from, uh, the original creation of the Marina over, over there. Was originally rejected and then subsequently accepted.
I don't think we're gonna sort it today, but I think, Jim, and I was attempting to point out. The, um, I think we gotta sort out something with revenue or something on this, though, because it's just. We, we've all seen it's a. It's, it's a red item, it's, you know, so we're losing twenty K on this one. Now, I understand in city government, that tends to probably be the. The case, you know, it's, there's, there's not a lot of. Opportunity to create new revenue, but. I think this, this one, because it, no doubt, the Marina is an important part of the city, no doubt about it. Um, but we could potentially find a better way to. Get some, get some funding and revenue streams in there some, in the future.
Yeah, I mean, you could, I don't know what they would be, but, uh. In terms of, yeah, I, as Bonnie mentioned, uh, you know, you're pretty much at the top of the, the, uh. The market in terms of renting slips. Uh, and that's really the only revenue stream there is there.
Yeah. I mean, events, I mean, cons, you could.
We do weddings in the park, but, and that's a park event.
That's a park.
And that's not factored into this. But it's the fact that the Marina is there is what makes people want to have their wedding there.
Yeah. So simply maybe a way of recognizing that as specific revenue towards Marina may just, for a sanity check, might be, yeah.
Possible.
And, well, let's talk about that, actually. Let's take a minute. We, um. Uh, Janet, where is? I see you have a line item for utilities. It's called Utilities Telephone. It's line number fifty-two twenty?
Yep.
Do, what about the electricity that is used at the docks? And, and the boats there, I assume, have privileges to connect their boats to. To plugins, right?
Yes, they do. Um.
And are they sub-metered?
Pardon?
Are they sub-metered?
No.
No, they're not. So that, the, the electric usage is rolled into their rent, is that right?
I believe so, um, Ellen Lorraine.
Yeah, they do not pay extra for utilities when they rent a slip.
So it's, it's all.
So they get water and electricity, uh, you know, gratis, is that right?
Yeah, but Jim, that, to the point that make, that's, that's pretty standard. If you rent a slip anywhere in the, in the area, you have to have those things to, kinda like, take care of your bone.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, there, there, I'm not aware of any, uh, sub-metering that's going on in, in very major ports. Uh, there is sub-meters that are on, uh, on large docks when you have. Uh, mag, you know, hundred-foot yachts docking regularly, but, and in small boats, there's very rarely.
I see.
Any sub-metering going on.
Right. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Okay, um, I think just a couple of other items and they're pretty, pretty standard. Um, we have supplies, technical equipment. Um, at two thousand. Um, and then uniforms and miscellaneous, um, three hundred and a hundred respectively. Um, and that's, that's all I have for the Marina.
Janet, what kind of, uh, technical supplies do you, uh, does your staff need? Or use?
If there are, um, any, um. Special, any, any kind of special marine-type, um, equipment. Um, we have, um, obviously, um. The, uh, if there were an oil spill, any kind of spill and they needed the bones to clean up, we have those. Um, so that, that's the sort of equipment that they would need.
I see.
Actually, you actually, you actually have to have those things. Uh, they're called pigs. They're like. Giant sausages that are, you throw in the water to contain an oil spill or a fuel spill.
Uh-huh. Thank you, Janet.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions for me?
No, I think, uh, one of the questions, one of the things that we've been challenged on in the past is. The, uh, collection of the transient rentals for the hourly rental, and. You've been able to improve the security there. I know, uh, I think there's been some changes made there, correct?
Yes, I think, um, John, uh. One of his, one of his, um, challenges is, is really city dock, because he doesn't have a, a straight-line view of it from. Um, where he is in, in the net house, in his office, or even in Canalfront Park, if he's, um, out and about at the Marina. Um, so he does have, um. A, a pattern, shall I say, a schedule, and he, he, he'll go down to city dock first thing in the morning, so. Um, if there is, uh, a vessel that comes in after hours and docks, um, he will certainly. Um, make the arrangements for the, for the payment for the overnight. Um, but it, it would be optimal to have some sort of camera down there, and we have been. Working on that and, um, trying to get, uh, the internet down there. The, the issue is we need a building to be able to, um, put that on and get that rundown. So we're, we're still working on that, um, in the meantime. Um, John is, is very diligent. The dock master is very diligent about getting down and making sure who's there and are they scheduled.
John and Marcus are both very good. Uh, Marcus is an incredible young man. And he's gotten his license. I've run into him a couple of times.
Yeah, Marcus is actually gonna come in, um, and in the office and do some scanning chores part-time.
Yeah. He's a very nice young man. He's a very nice young man.
He's a neighbor.
Yeah.
He, he really, he's a very, he's very, well, he's, he's really got his head screwed on straight, that's great, so.
Yep.
And thank you very much, Janet.
Thank you, Janet.
Hopefully, we get through, uh, we have a more normal summer this year, uh, which will probably help with the revenue, because, you know, a lot of people didn't move around much last year in the summer.
Right, yeah, and I, I don't know, um, you know, when, when the Marina, when people were comfortable being out, and if they, if the Marina was full from April one, I, I don't know, because I, I wasn't here at the time, but I'm hoping for a better summer.
Yeah, I think they, we did collect the rent for the whole year, but I know some people came in late. And then we had some issues because of the lack of water, the, the fact that we didn't, we didn't dredge, so. Okay, thank you.
So thank you, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Have a great weekend.
Thank you.
Einstein.
Well, thank you. Forgot.
Okay, it is now three-thirty, you've been at this a couple of hours, you wanna try and tackle the building department?
Must you say tackle?
I say what?
I said, must you say tackle?
No, but I, I didn't mean that, I didn't mean that with any derogatory comment, uh, or in, you know, insinuation, so, is Robin with us?
I think so, there he is.
Hey, Robin.
In San Francisco.
In San Francisco, you managed to get away, that's.
That's right, yeah, after last night's meeting, I just flew to San Francisco to jack go on.
I don't blame you, you don't have a jacket on, you, in San Francisco, you would need a jacket today, I think.
That's Baker, that's Baker Beach.
Really, is that the name of it?
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay. So Robin, thank you for waiting in the wings all this time, and.
No problem, no problem, I'm here, I'm hopefully, hopefully, I'll be a lot quicker than Rick was.
Okay. Well, we, we certainly had a good conversation before.
You, you don't know your audience.
I've been listening.
Yeah, I think he probably has a pretty good idea. All right, so let's talk about the building department.
Uh, basically, in general, I mean, it's, uh, again, a, a, a lot simpler, I think, than, than, than Rick's department, um, there's not much to my department, um, not really asking for a lot of extras, um, I guess we can start, if you want, with the revenues part, or you wanna start with the expenditures?
Hey, let's start with revenues, fine.
Page three?
Page three.
And page, and then the, and then your expenditures are on page twelve.
Twelve, yes.
Okay.
I think, I think overall, dude, we've been relatively fortunate with the conditions that we've appeared to be somewhat stable, um, I guess it could be a lot better, but, but overall, I think, you know, from looking at the numbers, um, I, I, I think it's just in general terms, we've, we've stayed pretty consistent, um, as far as the, the building depart, uh, permits ends, I just pulled numbers, we're at a total of four hundred and seventy-four permits as of right now, total for the year. So that should basically put us on pace for about five hundred and forty-eight total for the year. La, last year, just as a reference point, we had a total of five hundred and sixty-three. So, I, I, I think that's relatively good.
Okay, and can, can you break that down, how many are complete rebuilds versus how many are renovations?
Yes, I've got, the, new, new, new permit, new, uh, excuse me, new construction permits, uh, we, we have done a total of twenty-two right now, and we have five that are being in the queue for plan review. So we're at twenty-seven total, roughly estimate. Using those numbers, that'll put us out of, but basically, it looks like, like thirty-one for the year. Referencing last year, we did thirty-five last year.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so those are complete new structures, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So thirty-five last year.
So you figured you'll get four that aren't yet in the queue, on top of the ones that are in the queue?
I expect we'll probably have at least four by the end of the fiscal year, yes.
Thanks.
Are we hoping anyway? We're hoping for more, but.
Hey, Robin, that includes situations where lots have been scraped, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that includes any, any demo and then rebuild.
Okay.
Have there been?
That number of twenty-two year-to-date is for fiscal year, is that correct?
April first to current, yes.
Correct, and so you're, you, and you have five in the queue, okay, I see what you're saying, all right, thank you.
And the rebuilds would be, how many?
I don't know a total, because the, the total includes everything, fences, sheds, I can break that down further if you would like, but, uh.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, Calvin.
Don't worry about it, thank you.
So hopefully with somewhat of a, I guess, post-COVID, maybe, in the future, you know, we, we've got a lot of subdivisions in the works, and, uh, again, we were looking hopefully for the assisted living to start, again, and, and Emery and Ellering could correct before we're all, but that wasn't put into the projected numbers.
You did not put it, you didn't put the workforce housing into the projected numbers?
No.
No.
Or assisted living?
No, we did not.
Neither one?
No.
We, we, um, had talked last year about if the, if we get a large permit like that, and the, the revenues exceed, um, the, the revenue projection, that we would transfer it to the general capital projects fund.
Right, I've forgotten.
Because we don't have a, a sustaining revenue source, so we didn't, we didn't wanna over-project the revenue.
Right. And is that, um, and likewise with, with the new developments, let's say, uh, Louis Waterfront Preserve Brace Ground in FY twenty-two, we're not going to start, that, that goes into Capital Projects Fund too?
No, what, what I would say is any, any building permit revenues in excess of our projection, so anything that's above and beyond kind of the sustaining level of permit, so when you get.
Okay.
A large permit that throws it off, my concern with revising the projections is, you know, similar to the transfer tax.
Yep.
Not a stable revenue source, so if you adjust your projections based on a big project, then, you know, one year later, or a couple of years later, you're gonna have this drop in your revenue, so I, I would prefer to be conservative on the revenue side and then transfer it to a capital fund, so that we're not over-relying on it.
I agree, as, from the same reason that we did that with the transfer tax.
All right, Robin.
Okay, uh, other than, um, the, the business license numbers are pretty, pretty, uh, stable, um, we're a little lower than projected, but hopefully, in, with what's left in the fiscal year, we'll, uh, round it out to, to be close to the number. Um, and then the other is the Chesapeake, uh, gas main extension permits, they're relatively minor, couple a year at the most usually, and it doesn't appear we had any this year so far.
Okay.
Um, and that is the.
Revenue.
All the, all the revenue side.
Okay. Correct.
Um, on the expenditure side, it's, um, the first items are the employees, the health insurance, the salaries, and things like that for, which would be for full-time employees. Going down past the employees would be the maintenance of the vehicles. We adjusted it last year, we amended it to seven fifty last year, we kept it consistent this year. The consulting, there's not been used, the general advertising has now been moved, if I'm not mistaken, moved to the city hall, all combined, is that correct, Emery, Ellering? The advertising.
Yeah, we did that last year, I think.
Yeah.
We did. Robin, where, where are we projecting the admins upgrade, or is that gonna be done in this fiscal year, so that Steve will have, uh, the enforcement person would have access to a computer in his vehicle?
That's gonna be done this year, um, we're looking at the timing when we make the switch, because it's, it's not just like flipping the switch.
I get that, yeah.
What kind of money does that take?
Around forty-five hundred, I think, is what we've budgeted to do the hosting.
To do the hosting, but does that include the training?
Uh, the training of the modules is a different aspect than hosting, hosting enables him to have access while in the field, training is something else, but we can look at that.
So that'll go into an ongoing training budget, I would assume, because that'll be a recurrent thing, because you'll have to do some, whoever's doing it will have to do some ongoing training from time to time.
I mean, they're using the system now anyway, so they'll.
Yeah, but, you're still, right.
But, um, the, the timing isn't as much related to the cost of it, it's not wanting to, um, have the system down at a time when we have a lot of revenue coming in, so we need to time it between the GRRT, um, and license renewal, and then the taxes going out, so the hope is to do it in that.
So you're looking at doing it late March?
Good planning.
We're hoping probably end of February.
Okay, terrific. Great, thanks.
Uh, then moving down to, uh, conference seminar and travel, I guess the one benefit of the COVID is, uh, lack of travel, a lot of things are being having through Zoom, virtual trainings, a lot of the organizations are having, uh, virtual conferences, so, um, that does, uh, help us in, in the, in the long run, I would say, um, also, um, we're going to be, as far as, um, conferences and things like that, um, we kept it at, uh, a thousand dollars. The dues and subscriptions, um, that includes, uh, memberships to the ICC and through the, uh, uh, plant, um, excuse me, the Flood Plane Managers Association and the Builders Official Association for Lower Delaware. Those three items we have, it's almost, it's, it's a kind of a standard at this point, a yearly membership fee, and then, right now, it's, the certifications are for myself and for Henry, that's kind of a more of a moving target, um, not as far as price-wise, as far as years-wise, the ICC, the cycles for the certifications for the ICC is every three years, the bill, uh, the, uh, Flood Plane Managers is every two years, so, but me and Henry are on off-cycles, so we're, we, we're not every year the same, so, one year, our, our numbers might be a little higher because we hit at the same time, others might be a little less because one of us or none of us are due those certification payouts. The number has increased though, because, uh, we've moved Steve now to our Assistant Building Officials position, he will need to get certification and training, and also hopefully with our new, new hire of, uh, our Code Enforcement Officer, to get some sort of training for that individual also, so that's why the increase in, uh, projected, uh, expense. I'm not too sure about the supplies, technical equipment. I think that's a new item.
Wouldn't there be something associated with Steve's mobility, uh, you know, with the admin system, isn't there, is there some purchase required with that?
Well, that is where we budgeted for the ICC manuals.
Okay.
We've got them.
The ICC manuals, okay, that comes under dues and subscriptions, I think?
No.
No, that, the supplies, technical equipment.
The supplies and technical equipment, that's the codebooks themselves.
Okay, but does Steve, for Steve, I think it's Steve who's gonna be the mobile agent for the office, right, he'll be, he'll have the, and does that require some kind of hardware purchase for that to be realized?
I think that's what was Ellen Lorraine was talking about earlier.
Well, there's currently already a laptop in operation, so it's meaning, we would just need to put the admins location on it, and then we would need to provide data.
Right. So there's a data plan that you'll be buying, is that what you're doing, having to do?
Well.
Okay. Thank you.
Robin, could you talk to us a little bit about your, your staffing? Well, did your staffing change this fiscal year?
We, we actually had budgeted for a, a, a new position of Assistant Building Official, but it was only at a nine, originally nine-month.
Appointed.
Uh, due to the COVID, we've pushed, kept pushing that back. Just recently, Steve was promoted to that Assistant Building Officials position, so, uh, we were going to be hiring for the actual now vacant Code Enforcement position.
What is your timing on that?
The, um, the, uh, applications closed on Monday at four o'clock, so hopefully, this soon as those applications come in, we'll have a chance to interview and hopefully, as soon as possible, get someone on board. I'm hoping by the end of the fiscal year.
Have you budgeted for that person for the, for all of FY twenty-two?
Yes, yes, we have, that's, that's included in the figures.
And it's just the three of you? I thought there was a, an admin person that got added.
I thought so, too.
That, that person is in the finance department and has duties in both finance.
I'm sorry, Anne Marie, I couldn't quite hear.
That person is in the finance department and has duties in both finance and building.
Okay, so she's, her time's not allocated, she's all in finance. About how much of her time is spent with building?
She does, I would say at least fifty-fifty, because she's in main contact for building permits that are submitted, she also handles business licenses.
Right, okay, so it looks as though the building operation, if, if I've got my numbers approximately right, is about a break-even, as I think it should be, with the, with the permits covering the expenses, is that, is that about right, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Um, the other item on there is the uniforms, um, that was a new item last year, uh, we've got uniforms for myself, Steve, and Henry, um, we're gonna be, have to budget for the new employee for the uniforms and any upkeep that we might need on the existing uniforms we have, which are shirts and a, and a jacket.
Do we provide cleaning services for your uniforms?
No, we do that ourselves.
Okay.
I take, I take the shirt home and, and do it on, yes.
Yeah.
It's just.
Thank you.
Polo shirts, it's all of them.
Right.
I think the only dry cleaning services we provide are laundry is for the police department.
Okay.
And you, you guys take your cars home, or are they just, you only use them while on city business?
I take mine home, Henry and Steve leave it here at the, at the, at the, uh, city hall.
Okay.
And Anne Marie, it's generally that the, a department had, has, uh, a, a car they take home?
Yes.
With police being a, an slight exception.
Right.
Correct.
Uh, the last thing on the expenditures is miscellaneous, uh, basically covers, basically hard hats, flashlights, things, you know, tape measures, things like that, that we might need.
Yep.
Hey, Robin, can I ask you just a quick question, uh, that occurred to me last night, uh, when you were talking about the various, the four inspections, plus the two that are done, uh, outside of, uh, Lewis, is that, is that standard, I mean, is there sort of a, a accepted building, um, program for inspections?
Some do more, um, I don't wanna say some do less, um, the county has a couple extras that we, I've started to kind of look into, um, they call it a, what they call a closing inspection, it's almost like a house wrap inspection, that, um, it's basically in between before. Before, uh, in between the framing and the energy inspection, it's, it's to ensure that the, the outside is sealed up properly, um, around the windows and everything like that, also, uh, some of the municipalities, I think, are going to, I'm. Also, some of the municipalities, I think, are going to a mechanical inspection now also. That's over the plumbing. That's talking about the ductwork and and all the heating in AC equipment. But overall, ours is pretty much in line with besides those extra inspections that some other municipality might do.
Okay.
Interesting.
If if you could keep us, I mean, if those standards change, you know, obviously let council know we might have to adjust the fees or something or if the county does it, you know, we wouldn't be involved. But I I just was after listening to you talk about all the various stages of this, I was just curious. So thank you.
Thank you.
You know, that actually raises a really interesting point, I think, because there I actually assumed that we did those inspections here because I thought that was standard everywhere, tell you the truth, about the closing inspections, for example. Is that? I had I in my mind, I had the International Building Code that built into that code was a requirement for inspections to support the code. But there really isn't a correlation, is there?
No.
And is that because we've opted not? Or is that just standard practice?
A lot of things, yeah, a lot of things that the ICC they leave up to the, you know, different organization or municipalities to kind of it's the same thing about removing stuff from the code. They kind of leave it up to the municipalities to say is do you feel that's necessary or not?
And what what does Robin Davis think?
I think the more inspections we can do, the better off we are.
I concur.
Again, again, with that is is what Councilman Officer said. It's the extra time that might is going to be needed, which maybe will not correlate to the fees that we're charging.
Right, but it also what I would remind my peers here is is that with inspections, there is suggests that the quality of the end product is going to be better. And that internally serves the owner, but it serves the entire community. That's that is really interesting. I did not realize that there was such a gap between the code actually and inspections. Very interesting. Wow. Tell me something about the mechanical inspections. Do we have anyone on staff right now who has that certification to be able to do that?
Not not the as that separate certification, no.
I see.
Robin, you've said that that you're a master plumber.
Yes.
And that you could with some preparation, take over the plumbing inspections that are currently outsourced. So homeowners don't have to deal with so many different entities. Is that something that? How big a project is that for you?
I would say it's it's probably going to be a a lot more workload. I don't know exactly how many inspections the Charlie Steiner, he's the plumbing inspector, the independent individual that does it for the Board of Public Works. I would assume he would probably do two, three, four a day, maybe inspections.
Okay.
And in that, it it normally the plumbing inspections are normally just two, a rough end or a final. But there are times where there's underground work that has to be done. So there's an underground inspection, so it can be three. Maybe on commercial buildings, it might be a little bit more because they're doing them in phases. You know, your houses are normally the plumbing's done and it's done.
Robin, speaking of water connections, is there, I I can't remember what I've read. I apologize, my memory is not clear on this. At the time that there is a ser a water line, a service lateral install made, that connection is made. Is there an inspection done of that connection?
I cannot tell you a hundred percent sure because that's something that would be done through the Board of Public Works.
Right.
I would say there probably is. Anytime that you're probably connecting to their to their line, they're going to want to inspect it. I would assume.
Right, and doesn't there and there are some the state has some piece of that, don't they? Denrec or one of the state agencies?
Not not.
Anne Marie, maybe you know about this?
Not through the municipality. It's all it's if if it's if it's out in the county, the county has their own inspectors also that would would do that.
Right. But no, I was talking about inside the city. I was only talking about the city. Okay, I I need to go back and read again. I can't remember what I read. It's not reliable. My memory is not reliable on that. Anything else, Robin, that we should know about?
No, I think that's pretty pretty much, yeah, I think.
Okay, great.
Please tell Steve, congratulations. I I hadn't realized he'd been promoted. That's that's great.
Yeah.
It's been three weeks, four weeks, maybe now, yes.
Terrific. Good, that's great. All right, Robin.
Well, thank you all very much.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you. Thank you for all your good work. Thank you.
Bye, San Francisco.
I'll be back home in a few minutes.
That's a great virtual tour. Thank you. All right, so let's move on to Janelle if she's available.
Well, she's good on there. There was a line item on it was zero line item for for the whole thing through professional service consulting. Is there, does he get the benefit of some of the consulting and it's just not allocated to his department? Is that a fair way of looking at it?
If he needs Charlie for something or Tom West, i- if he uses that, we charge it to our general consulting line in the operating budget.
Hello, Janelle or Princess Lee, as we know you. Okay, so where are we now? Page thirteen.
Uh oh, you need to unplug and replug in.
You have quite a deep voice there.
Sounding like job.
The only one that does that.
That's better.
Much better.
All right, well, thank you.
Levity in the afternoon.
Yeah, on a late afternoon, yeah, okay. The floor is yours.
Thank you. The biggest change is really in the consulting fees for the planning and development office. And that's because I'm now full time. And we've reduced the need. We still have fee some money in there for Tom West to to assist when needed. That's really where the the biggest changes come into play is because I'm I'm full time now. I've taken over some of the projects he had been working on. So we've relied on him less and less as we've we've gone through the the last year. But there are still some projects that he helps out with, or there's just things that I I need and the department needs assistance with as we go forward. So that's really where the biggest change is, and that's actually a decrease in the amount of consulting money. The other change is a decrease in the amount of travel and seminar. We've had I've had the opportunity to do a lot of conferences virtually, which has helped save some money. But there is potentially a need for a future APA planning conference. And that is out of state. So if if it's still going forward, because I know this current year is it is virtually, but there's still a fee associated with that. So and that's in order for me to keep my my certification. So I'm a certified planner through the American Planning Association. So they have a requirement that you get some of these sort of continued maintenance requirements every two years. So I'm good for this year, but I will be starting a new cycle in the next year or so. Trying to think. And those and then the rest of them are just insurance, taxes and and.
Very straightforward.
Yes.
I just had one question. Thank you. And and this really, this is just because I can't remember. For things like the Aeon study that we did in connection with the Fisher's Code proposal, does that go? Do we put that under planning commission or where where do we show that?
So the one associated with the development is paid by the developer?
Okay.
Yeah, the one that we did before, I believe we did put in the planning line, didn't we? In the
That was that predated me.
Predated that Tom was on staff then.
Yeah.
Put that in the consulting line in the planning office.
If you look back at the consulting line, there were some significant numbers in nineteen, like even though Tom was with us full time, then it's thirty-seven thousand dollars consulting and there was a hundred and four.
Yeah.
Yeah, I that's what I thought. I just couldn't remember. I mean, that seems to me like an appropriate place for it.
Right.
I just didn't, you know, because it it doesn't seem to me it makes sense to put it on the planning commission's budget because it it it's a study that is beyond the planning commission. It benefits the entire city.
Right.
So it seems to me that's the appropriate spot for it. I just couldn't remember.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Any other questions for Janelle?
Yes, I I do. It's really maybe a question more for Anne Marie. Janelle, there's a revenue that you have you there's some revenue that comes in kind of associated with with your work and that's presumably on basically the subdivision fees, application fees. Um, Anne Marie, there's not any other revenue associated with a planner, is there?
There is not.
Is it in other municipalities? Are there fees that help defray that cost?
Sometimes it's a lot of places look at building and planning together. And if the application fees and the building permit fees come close, then that's that's typically one of the sources that they would use to try to cover that.
Would that be something we might want to look at to not to put the departments together, but to put them together for purposes of figuring how to break even in our development operation as a whole?
We certainly could.
The building is roughly a break even, I think, about three hundred and eighty thousand revenue and expense is I roughly.
And and I think then the other the other stream that that you would put into that category of revenue would be your contractor licenses.
Right.
Right.
Got out because the contractor licenses are there because they're building.
Right. If you could think about what that would mean in terms of adjusting our our building department fees. I don't I don't, you know, there's not much we can do with the subdivision application fees. I don't think.
Except collect them.
That would be that would be interesting for for the long term.
We can certainly look at that.
Yeah, I'd just like to add one thing, which is I mean, Janelle's head more than her hands full, but her her title is Planner in Community Development. And the idea in this position was that if the planner ever wasn't completely overworked like she is now, that that there would be some development of of grants, grant writing to to see about that. Now, I know grants aren't revenue, but it's just, you know, if you ever have some spare time, do let us know and we'll bill you back up.
I will let you know when I have time.
Yeah, I know. I'll be by the phone.
You know, I actually I would at some point in time, and we don't need to do it during this meeting about budget. I would actually like to better understand that aspect of Janelle's job. I understand the planner side, but I do need to better understand the the community development side. So I'll just put that in as a little.
I I think I could speak to that because I was the one that sort of insisted that the position when it was created first hired Tom, that 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 piece be added to it. And the reason that I wanted it in there was my concern that while we certainly have not had any lack of develop of planning work or development work. And we probably won't for the foreseeable future. The concern was that there would be this crescendo and then we'd be built out and then that would begin to come down. So I wanted the position to incorporate, should that day ever come, both the planner function and and something else. So we wouldn't hire somebody who would then find themselves not fully employed. So that that's the reason that it was, I mean, Ted, is that a fair?
You've described it exactly as you as you as we set it up.
Yes, this was really something that I I just wanted to make sure because back when we were creating the planner position, I I'll speak for myself. I wasn't fully convinced that that the planner would in out years would be fully fully occupied. And so I wanted to make sure because I don't like to hire people unless I know they're going to be around for the long haul. Because that's our responsibility, right? You don't hire someone and then fire them because you didn't think ahead of what you might what their job duties might be. So I think that's why that's in there. I I don't anticipate getting to that anytime soon.
I don't think so, not with what's.
Also.
I think well after you're off of council, if if you're really going to go ahead with leaving.
I know, but I got a horizon here to talk about, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Janelle.
Thank you.
Yeah. Enjoy the holiday weekend. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thanks, and you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're now just after four o'clock. We have two more items on this agenda, the finance, the City Managers Office and the Finance Department. Anne Marie?
All right. Tell you what page we're on.
Nine.
Nine. So again, it's there's not a whole lot of of categories in the budget. We have the the staffing at the current level. Again, this the the salary line accounts for getting a local government management fellow who would start over the summer. You know, again, the the priorities there would be the financial policies and the multi-year capital plan.
Anne Marie, what staff does this cover? This is Janine and Sue Ann?
Janine, Sue Ann, me, and then the local government management.
Okay.
If you look at line one hundred five twenty fifty-two sixty-six, you'll see twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars under consulting. That is, and and I had mentioned this before, that is the National Community Survey and the National Police Services Study. So that would be a benchmark study that would or survey that would be, we could compare ourselves with like communities. You know, it's a it's a constituent satisfaction survey. And the idea is that we would use that as the the foundation upon which we would build a strategic plan. So that's in there in the consulting line.
Over those two subjects again, police and what was the other one?
National Community Survey and the National Police Services Survey.
Do do we? What about we've talked through for years now about a consultant to do an inventory for the city? Is that tucked in here anywhere?
Inventory, the asset inventory?
Right.
That's gotten started under our auditor, so we just need to to kind of pick it up and and move it forward.
Fabulous, because that's all.
Believe they are working on that. We may be able to maintain it in a minute.
So you'll address that Ellen Lorraine when you do your presentation, is that right?
We're going, but but if I understand correctly, but but that's always been the other piece that we needed before we could do the 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 long-term capital. So I'm really glad to hear that. That's great. Thank you.
Pieces will come together.
Terrific.
Those those two surveys, Anne Marie, they will be the base, the information base for strategic planning. Is that the idea?
Yes.
And will the strategic planning be done in-house or will we be be hiring a consultant to help us with that?
We could potentially do something in-house. What we had talked about before was using the University of Delaware IPA program. They have people who who assist with that. But that would be that would be in a
Future fiscal year.
And that that cost, was there a cost associated with using the UD people?
So we would get a proposal for next budget year, but I would anticipate. Um, so we would get a proposal for next budget year, but I would anticipate based on prior discussions with them, it'd probably be around twenty thousand dollars.
I don't think we're there yet.
Yeah. I mean, I think we're a year out.
Yeah.
And Anne Marie on the, um, I lost my train of thought.
And depending on what it, depending on who we get as a local government management fellow, we might have somebody with that skillset where we could do it in-house, so. But because the survey is a major component of it that you really can't do in-house. But I think taking that and walking it forward, if you have the right people on staff, we might be able to do that.
I recall my question. It, it harks back to Bonnie's point or Bonnie's question about the asset inventory. Would that be in the nature of a reserve study too?
I don't believe that a reserve study was part of that.
Because for capital, for capital budgeting, that's, um, almost essential.
Yeah, but I think the asset inventory is just trying to figure out what we got.
The physical inventory, right?
Uh, you're absolutely right, Rob. The next issue is, okay, now you know what you got. We fortunately, we've now got a facilities manager who can tell us what kind of shape it's in. Then you start figuring out how you're gonna prepay it.
I think a lot of these things are building blocks that we, you know, we start with. Um, the, the asset inventory, um, then, then from there, we, we look at, you know, okay, what, what are the conditions? What's our next five year? And then once you kind of get into that cycle, you know, you, you start getting that cycle underway of the five-year cycle of capital planning. That's when I think you're in a better position to do the, the reserve study because then you've got more data to work with.
Okay.
Anne Marie, you said you, you need about five, you, you, you're thinking about five years of that.
Well, I, so we would do a, a five-year plan and I would think at some point in that cycle, we would have enough information that we could start to, to get a better sense of. And that may be something that we hire a CPA firm to do, whether it's our auditor or somebody else.
Well, there are specialists who do, who do reserve studies for, for organizations.
Right.
Yep.
Um, line fifty-two ninety is, um, conference seminar travel. Um, we have that at six thousand. That includes me going to the ICMA conference and also Janine going to the International Institute for Municipal Clerks, which she ends up, she's not going to go. So over the next week, we're probably gonna bring that number down a little bit. So, um, dues and subscriptions.
So will you, excuse me, Anne Marie, will you actually be traveling this year? Would you anticipate?
So my conference is in October, so I'm optimistic.
I see. And where does that help?
Um, this year will be in Portland.
Oh.
Maine or, or Oregon?
Oregon. So, um, dues and subscriptions covers the, the various, um, for me, IPA, or APA, ICMA, AICP. For Janine, it covers the Delaware Institute for Municipal Clerks and the, and their International Institute for Municipal Clerks. Um, I think that's everything that's in there. And then the other one is contingency and that's where we put the money that we end up using elsewhere in the budget for the Christmas bonus.
Right. For the, for the what, please?
Christmas bonuses for staff.
Oh, cr- oh, thank you.
So, um, that's the city manager's office.
Okay, great. All right, that leaves us just Ellen Lorraine.
I'm on page ten.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Next page, ten.
So on page ten, the overall department went down. Um, you're gonna see where salaries increased. We are going to, I'm hopeful to hire a receptionist to fill that position, um, before this fiscal year is done. So it will count for a full year, um, of five people in the department. I reduced the overtime, um, in the department. Uh, as you can see so far, about two thousand has been spent. So I think that we would see similar, uh, stating. What Anne Marie mentioned about someone coming and helping us do some scanning and I think they would be primarily working on scanning of property tax records and documents related to properties. And so that's why it's reflected in the finance department. Uh, we're hopeful about me hours a week. Um, at about ten dollars an hour is what we were thinking to complete that.
How many hours a week was that, please, Ellen Lorraine?
Ten.
Twenty.
Twenty, thank. Lost your sound, Ellen Lorraine.
Can you hear me now?
Yep. Thank you.
And where's that line, Ellen Lorraine? Where's that scanning cost?
Fifty-one oh four.
Uh, okay, part-time, right. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, the next are payroll taxes associated with those upper lines. Health insurance, you'll see health insurance went down uh, because an employee is not needing coverage. So we were able to see that savings. Uh, life insurance and then of course pension. Uh, the finance payroll line is for ADP, helping us to process payroll. And we also have time and attendance module through, uh, ADP, which people, employees are able to log in and record their time. Eventually to get out of physical time sheets that we are currently completing and some departments, it's gonna be easier than others due to variety of pay, uh, but we're slowly making that transition.
Ellen Lorraine, um, and in my company, we're able to manage like our IRA contributions through our ADP. Is that something that the staff is able to do as well? Are they able to work their own allocations or?
So our retirement is through principal, but employees are able to go in and adjust their percentage that they would like to contribute. And then we get notified via email that there's been a change. They're able to go into a ADP version and, uh, track their wages. Um, a lot of us currently do not get pay stubs. All of us have direct deposit. We currently do not get pay stubs. We can get those electronically. So that's cut down on a delivery of ADP reports to City Hall since we're able to access those.
Thank you. Right.
Hello, the, um, the four-three B contribution the city makes is that's reported under, as a pension?
Yes.
Pension line.
And while we're on that, there's a discrepancy. Uh, you've been budgeting ten percent of, of every, of the top line, the fifty-one hundred line every year. This year I noticed you've dropped it down.
I did because of the six-month waiting period, uh, for a new hire.
Okay.
The receptions there would be.
Got it, got it. Thank you.
And Ellen Lorraine, who are the people in your department?
This Lenora Dillinger, who is, um, flex our taxes and she also is working the, the walk-up window. And then we have Shelby, who is our HR and payroll benefits administrator. Debbie, who is our financial administrator. And then Chelsea, she is a permit and business license specialist. She's the one that, uh, works with the building department.
Thank you.
And they're all full-time, is that correct, Ellen Lorraine? Thank you.
Okay, so the next line is audit and you're gonna see that I am asking for this to be increased because after speaking with our auditors, um, they are mentioned to me the possibility of them coming in on a regular basis to review financials. Um, as they're progressive so that when, the end of the fiscal year, they're able to, uh, complete the audit more timely and more efficiently. Uh, currently we are having the audit done now be, and there is a delay in that uh, due to staffing, due to COVID, everything. So we're able to uh, set up a computer whereby they are able, the auditors are able to access our financial software and, um, pull reports that they need, do additional studying and testing as needed. So um, I'm projecting about seventy-five hundred dollars would cover that one additional service if, if council agrees that we can move forward with that.
And run, run through the advantages again, a quicker audit at the end of the year. And in the, during the year, what would be the advantages to you?
They could come in and kind of review. The finance is making sure that we are posting properly. They could also possibly provide, um, suggestions on asset tracking and how best to handle that and also accounting policies.
And speaking of asset tracking, the, the asset inventory that Bonnie asked about, is that in that number?
We have a module in our accounting system now for fixed assets that I think that we could learn more to and set it up in a way that it would meet the needs of the city. But we would need to get the listing from our auditors first, um, before we set that up in a minute.
Thank you. So we'll do the asset inventory in-house, um, after we get after, after we get trained in the module and get the, the, some information from our order.
Um, under a conference seminar and travel, I'm hoping to maintain that budget. I too interested in attending the ICMA conference in, um, Portland with Anne Marie if, in October, if that's possible. And then also there may be some training opportunities for our HR and benefits administrator and our finance administrator and then the, the permits and specialist as well as our tax clerk. So I'm interested in finding out where we can seek that additional training for them. This along with dues and subscriptions, uh, there's some of the organizations we're looking at and that I'm currently a member of, but want to get other staff members included with the firm with the dealing with HR, uh, GFOA, which is the, um, accounting side of, um, aspect. Uh, we also have, uh, women leading government that the ladies are interested in and IPMA, which is relating to public management. Um, so increasing membership in those. And then miscellaneous is, um, for incidentals within the department.
Ellen Lorraine, where are we? Uh, where did you budget the funding for host compliance, assuming we go forward with that?
It's in operating.
Or in operating.
Engaged with host compliance.
I thought we were, but I just didn't.
Yeah, so we've already started. I actually have a, a meeting set up with them later next week because I'm, I'm still trying to get the feel.
Okay.
Can, can you, can you kind of tell us to back, kind of make that part of your management report to let us know what the status on that is just because it's, I mean, it is a new initiative and it'll be interesting to see if it pays for itself or not.
Right. Yeah, I'm just still trying to figure it out. Um, I'm trying to understand how to read their reports. You know, I can get into my dashboard and stuff, but I can't necessarily.
Well, I think we also.
I can't read it well enough to know for making money.
Right.
We ought to make sure they, the, uh, good idea that Bonnie had, uh, make sure we share it because I think it'll motivate people to make sure they pay their GR.
Be nice to know if they, it'd be good to know that, that we are in fact now looking over people's shoulder, shoulders.
Yeah. Okay.
Anne Marie on, I, I, sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say, I personally am not gonna scrutinize the, um, conferences and travel budgets this much this year too much because I think, I, I hope that you all do get to avail yourself of those opportunities.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I just, I, you know, I just don't think we say it enough. And I know that we don't really have, we have, I think, two attendees at this point, but I'll say it anyway. Um, the, the way that the staff responded to the COVID crisis in the last year, delaying hiring, everybody pitching in, making the remote workplaces function. Um, that, that was the staff that got the city through this crisis. Get, finding the money, um, from the CARES Act. I mean, the list goes on and on and on. And I just wanna take a moment to, we're not out of COVID yet, but just take a moment to thank all of you because you really, really went the extra mile for this town.
You're here.
Thank you.
I certainly appreciate the staff recognizing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just was saying, I do appreciate the staff that recognized the time that we were in and willing to make the sacrifices that they did.
Absolutely.
Really excited you, you, um, you know, you heard from Janet, who is one of our mid-pandemic hires, I guess we should say, um, today. And, and then Ellen Lorraine mentioned, um, Chelsea and, um, and Shelby and Debbie. And then we also have brought a couple of new people into the maintenance department. Um, you know, we have a new police officer this year. And I, I really think that we've gotten some really good hires and, and people that kind of will really take the organization forward. So I'm really kind of excited about what, with the staff we have now, where we can go with that.
Yeah, one suggestion is, I mean, I've got to tell you, I, I wouldn't know a lot of these new employees if I ran into them. So the, um, I've forgotten what you call it, manager spotlight or whatever the, whatever the publication is that you send out by code red and stuff. It might be nice to just do a little bio of all these folks because there are a lot of new faces. And, you know, it's always good for the people to understand where their money's going. And, um, you know, I, 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 I recognize that if you talk about a lot of administrative folks, you know, sometimes you get a blowback of all that bloated local government, blah, 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 you know, okay. So you might want to talk about, and, and, and we say a fond farewell to the following. So, so, you know, do that. But, uh, but I, I think in particular, the, 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 the HR function that we now have, it's gonna be, um, the much more yep, better advice to our employees and happier employees or more productive employees. Everything works better. So, uh, I think these are all great additions.
Okay.
Since we're talking about, uh, personnel writ, writ large, I might mention that, um, we, it would be great if we could, um, if one of our coming hires is more diverse. The, um, I'm talking both in, in sexual diversity and in racial diversity. I don't think every blue collar job needs to be filled by a man and every pink collar job by a woman. Uh, I don't think that, uh, and, and we have a very white workforce. So, um, I, I know that the police department, thanks partly to Bonnie, seems to have gotten that message. I hope so. Um, but we need to be aware of it, all of us, I think, all the time.
Anne Marie and I have been talking about it for the last several months here.
Yeah, I think Rob is exactly right. And as we all know, the way to do that, nobody is talking about affirmative action hiring. Just to be clear, with the way to do it, the proper way to do it is expand your pool because then you may get people you hadn't thought of. And I was particularly impressed, uh, when Ricky was talking about how Allison goes out and throws trash. I mean, you know.
And she talks trash too.
She talks, yeah, to Rob's point. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll never forget the time about two or three months ago, I, on my, on my trash days, I'm out on the street putting my neighbor's cans away, my elderly neighbor's cans away. And she, and the ki- can, the trash truck arrived and I look over and there's Allison Kirk up in the driver's seat. I said, what are you doing up there, you know? And she said, I do it all, Tim. I was like.
One of the things, you know, we, look, we, we all know this. We all know that when, regardless of whether we, you know, we know we want to see a more diverse workforce. We know when we think of the guys throw trash, we think of the guys that throw trash. So, you know, A- Allison did not waste any time getting on that truck because I think we all knew that there were gonna be some skeptics. And so she got right in there, got, you know, she's not afraid to get her, her feet dirty or hands dirty and.
Got her CDL.
Needs to do.
Yeah.
Well, perhaps the, uh, the example that she was following when she did that was be our city manager who in her first couple of weeks rode the trash truck, rode with the cops, you know, and.
I need to ride with the cops. That is one thing I need to do.
Well, if, but, but my point is that, you know, that's the way, that's what you learn other people's worlds is by going into them.
Absolutely. Walk. Walk in my shoes.
Yep.
Okay. All right, Ellen Lorraine, thank you very much for your work there and for providing information. We are, are there any other budget items we want to or need to discuss other than the fact that you have a cat who wants to get on camera?
This cat unfortunately has a has a bad thyroid condition, and so she has to be fed all the time. So she's.
That's the one that doesn't travel.
Yeah, well, this is the one who is basically quasi feral. And we we don't, we we made the decision not to do the treatment for hyperactive thyroid disease because it would frankly be, she's not young, and it would be crueler to her to have in a, getting a radioactive isotope treatment and being in a cage for three days than than it would be to kind of just help her through these, through this period. And this could go on for years. I mean. I hope so, she's not suffering, she's just hungry.
Okay.
Just keep her in the house so she doesn't eat the birds.
Oh, no, she, they're they're indoor cats, all three of them.
Yeah.
All right, we, is there any other budget topic that we need to go ahead and discuss tonight? Helen Lorraine, on the the vehicle list you sent is really helpful because it's got mileage and all of that on it. I think for every, especially for Tim and and for Andrew, it might be helpful to, if we could just, in some way, denote which ones are leased and which ones are not. But it's just putting an S after them or something like that, or or an L. I think because we obviously have trash trucks and we have several city vehicles that are leased. And I will get you the information. You and I have spoken about the EV vehicles and the purchasing collaborative that's existing through the Climate Mayor's Organization. It may be possible that that would be something we want to look at. Okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, we have on here the opportunity to go into executive session. I, do we have anything that we need to discuss here this evening? And you're, got yourself muted, Anne Marie.
There is one staff pay issue that that I want to raise.
Yeah, we need to go into executive.
It can be dealt, I mean, if we, it can wait till the next.
It can wait till next week, okay. Let's plan to do it next week then. Okay.
It can wait, absolutely.
Absolutely, we've been at this, you know, since one o'clock, it's now 4:30.
Well, if you add up this week, yeah, if you add up this week, it's.
A lot of hours.
A lot of time together.
Yes, we have. Including with your cat.
All three of them.
And Tim's dog. So the other one, we never see. All right, so if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to adjourn and.
Good, I shall move.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn. And before we adjourn, I would wish everyone a happy, a long three-day weekend and a happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you very much, Ted, appreciate it.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Bye, Tom.
Bye-bye.
Bye.